Good morning. The Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Reverend Timothy Womack from the First Presbyterian Church, and then we'll have the honor of having the pledge presented by Commissioner Laura Moss. Please rise. Move your favor.
Almighty God, we give you thanks for this time today to do service for those who are citizens of our community. We do pray for our first responders and their service to us, for those who seek to honor and protect those who take care of home and property. We pray for those in the armed forces. We celebrate their service, and we ask for your protection upon them. We give you thanks for our county commissioners for this governance that is working, that is serving, that is engaged, and we ask that you would be with them in the difficult decisions they face. Allow them to know that we honor their service and we seek God's blessing upon them. Be with our community and guide us this day, that we may know that you are always with us and reinforce all the good that we strive to accomplish. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Next Tuesday is Veterans Day, November 11th. Veterans comprise more than 10% of the population of our county. We're proud and happy that they choose us, that they choose to live here, and thankful for all of them. Let's honor them with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I take just one moment of personal privilege? I want to thank the county. I'm Tim Womack from First Presbyterian Church, just did the prayer, one of my shorter prayers, so you're lucky. I'm sorry I'm underdressed, but as you know, we had to tear our sanctuary down because it was below floodplain and we had a lot of issues with that. We want to thank everyone and just guarantee to everyone that we are looking to put an equally beautiful space, sanctuary on that space, so that it continues to be a beautiful little part of our county, right there on Indian River Boulevard and the Royal Palms. So, thank you very much.
That was what, about 50-plus years old, more or more?
Yeah, it was begun in 1954, and it was completed in 1950. I think, or 1955, for the amazing cost of $140,000.
Wow.
I wish it was that today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. All right, we'll move on to any additions, deletions to the agenda. The emergency service staff has requested full item 9Q Quebec for this time. We'll be coming back, and I'd like to pull item 12B, County Administrators Matters, on his contract.
Mr. Chair, you may. Pull was in, discussed?
No, take it off the agenda for now. If you come back at the next meeting. It is, it's nearly a million-dollar decision. It was, it appeared on the agenda on Thursday. It's been in Granicus for a month. I, I've met with the county administrator. It was never discussed, and I asked you all if it was discussed. Again, in transparency, this is a rather formidable decision that appeared on the agenda on Thursday.
Mr. Chair, I would disagree, and I'm fully prepared to have the discussion today.
I also disagree, and I'm fully prepared.
I would assume so. Have you had discussion with the county administrator on the matter?
That's not the task in front of us. The task in front of us right now is amendments or deletions or additions to the agenda.
No, there's a discussion on additions and deletions to the agenda. I ask you-
I'm going to move to approve deleting only 9Q.
Well, that's, I would like to hear from the rest of our commissioners. Thank you.
I'm prepared to discuss that, I think it's a board to discuss it, because I think we've looked kind of dysfunctional, and I think we need to clear the air and make a decision one way or the other, is what we want to do.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, we still, we're still on the agenda deletions? Are we going to talk about it now?
You just voted to approve everything.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Deleting only 9Q, which was requested.
Because I would like to pull 9L and 9M. I'm sorry if we can go back and do that, because I-
Oh, from consent? We haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten to that point.
Oh, I thought we were there. I'm sorry. I'm confused. Forget I even said anything. I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's the reason why I wanted to pull the other item.
Consent, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Jeez, you've never done this before.
Wow. Okay. Well, there are no proclamations of presentations. There's no minutes to be approved. Informational items? Anybody want to discuss anything on informational items?
On 7F, I've, y'all saw my letter, I've been invited to get mobile, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Indian River Lagoon Council and the National Estuary System, on a panel discussion on what the estuary system and the lagoon system, how valuable it is to the coastal communities, and I'm looking forward to it. It seems like a very esteemed board, and I'm just proud to be a part of it, and I'll fill you in when we get back. So it'll be next week.
That is awesome.
It's at no cost to the county. The estuary system's paying for it.
They're paying a freight.
So.
Thank you for attending.
Represent us well. Move on to the consent agenda? This will be the time.
Consent agenda, 9L and 9M.
9L and 9M. Mike and Lima, is there anything else that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none? Commissioners?
Who's approval is amended? Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Irwin?
Thank you. 9L, that's a resource here. It's all right, I can handle it. Because 9L, approval to submit a FWC bulk derelict vessel remover grant application. This is for another derelict vessel in Indian River. We are, we are doing extremely good things with regards to this, and this is the one that was in the river. The second one's the one that's more high-profile, but I just wanted to bring that forward, that our natural resource staff is working extremely hard to get these. Melissa has got some, we've got some help now that they're moving forward on getting these taken. So with that, I'd recommend we approve staff. Oh, there you are, right there. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about 9L and 9M. I'm on L right now. It's the first one that was removed, or going to be removed.
Good morning, everybody. I apologize for the delay. Kylie Anchula, Natural Resources Director, for the record. So, we do have two FWC derelict vessel grant applications that are currently in process, so. Technical difficulties. There we go. All right, so we have one vessel that is north of Round Island, so I'm sure that several of you have received calls about this particular vessel. So this vessel washed ashore right after Hurricane Milton, and it's on the beach. It's about a half a mile north of Round Island. So the removal cost of this one is $33,995, and this is 100% reimbursable through the FWC rapid removal grant. So basically, we are recommending that you authorize us to apply for this particular grant, so that we can remove that vessel from the beach, and we recommend that you authorize the county administrator to execute the contract documents if funds are awarded and upon concurrence by the county attorney's office. So this one has been on the beach for quite some time. It is currently buried in the sand, and we are pursuing a rapid removal grant, which just facilitates a faster removal process. They are actually going to have to cut this one up to take it off the beach at this point, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's the one that was, obviously, was said on the beach and real high-profile, and the fact that it's got to be cut up and just can't be hauled off like one of these normal boats is a pretty big deal, but I just want to commend staff for moving forward on both of these. So, unless you have anything else?
I have a little bit about the next boat as well. Just a map. So we also have a vessel that is just north of Fritz Island, which is close to the Vero Beach Marina. That's also been there for quite some time. Thankfully, the removal process for this particular vessel will be a little bit more streamlined, so the cost is significantly lower. It's $6,900, and this one is 100% reimbursable, but through the FWC bulk derelict vessel grant. So that grant process is a little bit longer, so that one, basically, we apply and then we work with the contractor, we open the PO, and then we go for reimbursement with an agreement in place, whereas the other one is through, FWC actually opens a PO for us specifically. So there's just a little bit of a procedural difference in terms of the bulk grant and then the other one, the rapid vessel removal grant. So we do recommend that you authorize the chair to execute the FWC bulk derelict vessel removal grant application, and that the board authorize the county administrator to execute the contract documents if funds are awarded and upon concurrence by the county attorney. So these are two vessels that we are recommending that we apply for the FWC grant, but we also have two other ones that are currently in process, meaning right now we have four derelict vessels that we are aware of, three of which are in the lagoon and one of which is on the beach.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move staff recommendation on 9L.
Second. Very excited, again, you pointed it out, how quickly this was done, and the public needs to realize how much difficulty there is in this travel, as far as checking with insurers, ownership. There is a rather lengthy process, and this one was expedited as best it could be, so thank you. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll move staff approval on 9M.
9M, Mike, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The consent agenda is complete. We'll now move on to any matters that the public wishes to discuss that's on the agenda, other than public hearings. If not, we'll move on to the public hearing, item 11, which is the second public hearing proposed for developers agreement between Pulte Home Company LLC and Indian River County for Emerson Oaks subdivision. This is legislative in nature. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Prado, Deputy County Attorney for Indian River County, Florida. Yes, this is our second public hearing of two required public hearings under Florida statute 1633225. The first public hearing was held on October 1st, 2025, in these chambers. This is again for the developers agreement that is being proposed for the Emerson Oaks subdivision for 171 single-family lots to be located on the southwest corner of 43rd Avenue Southwest and 13th Street Southwest. Again, it's proposed to be constructed in three phases. Each respective phase has their own set of improvements that the developers required to add or provide. There was also several items which the developer is providing as well, such as dedication of right-of-way. There's 0.94 acres of right-of-way alongside 13th Street Southwest frontage for future street realignment. That is realigning, again, 13th Street between 43rd to run straight across and over some other developments that are heading in, so it can line up straight between 27th all the way out past 43rd. So we're trying to get that roadway ahead, hopefully, and save us some taxpayer dollars that way. 100 feet of right-of-way along the entire 17th Street Southwest frontage of the project. Again, that helps us get right-of-way ahead of time. 50 feet of right-of-way along the entire 43rd Avenue Southwest frontage of the project. That will bring it up to a total of 100 feet of right-of-way there. Intersection, turn lane improvements. There are required traffic improvements that they're required to do. These are not things that are necessarily above and beyond. It's a westbound left turn lane, which they have to do to help offset what their actual, their actual impacts to that area would be. Southbound right turn lane on to 43rd Avenue Southwest at 13th Street Southwest, and northbound left turn lane on 43rd Avenue Southwest, 13th Street Southwest, and an eastbound left turn lane on, sorry, eastbound left and right turn lane on 13th Street Southwest at 43rd Avenue Southwest during Phase 1B. And paving and drainage improvements, because we know drainage is extremely important, they're required to deal with their own drainage and, for their subdivision, along 17th Street Southwest, along the project's entire site and frontage. Eastbound left and right turn lane on 17th Street Southwest at 43rd Avenue Southwest. They are also contributing their fair share to a bridge that needs to be constructed, their fair share is a 3.7% to the 17th Street Southwest Bridge. There was a traffic analysis that was, I believe Commissioner Moss, you received a copy, I'm not sure if anyone else, I believe requested a copy of that. But at this point in time, staff would ask that, our recommendation to the board is going to be that the board review the proposed developers agreement, open the public hearing for comment, close the public hearing, and that you accept and approve the developers agreement and allow the chair to execute same. That's what staff's recommendation is at this time. I am ready for any questions.
Commissioners, before I open up the public meeting and hearing, do you have any questions? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up a public hearing. There are two microphones. Please state your name for the record. Good morning.
Good morning. Walter McNulty, Indian River County resident, Vero Beach resident. Developers, when's it going to stop, people? You know nobody wants this to keep growing and growing. Why not a two-year moratorium to get the infrastructure together first? I just came over this morning. I don't live but six miles away, 20 minutes. You just keep, I mean, what's the deal with the developers? You guys in tight with them? I mean, it just makes no sense that we continue to approve these developments and the infrastructures. It's terrible right now. 60 needs help. I mean, even the big roads, like 60, and I just wish that you guys would take a two-year or four-year moratorium from building, from everything except for infrastructure. And that's my own opinion on it, and you guys do what you want, but obviously, I'm a voter, and I've talked to probably in the last month 200 people, and we're pretty disappointed with a lot of what's happened lately. And one of them is this here. We've got to stop developing for a while, catch our breath, get the infrastructure right, and then come back and revisit it. But you're going to do what you want to do, and that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you? I'm Barbara Milas. You all know me. I'm probably hearing them put a target on my back, but I work for Road and Bridge, and this is getting ridiculous. We have 37 people at Road and Bridge, eight of them are bosses. We get looked down upon because we are told that whatever we are supposed to do, it comes from downtown. We can't do this county. We don't have enough people to take care of this county. We have one, one pipe crew. We have 30 pipes or more that need to be just put in the Highlands, that have been failing for 10 years at least. And like he's saying, you know, you all are, just keep building and building. Who's going to take care of this? Really, we have no people. Do you all have incentive to try to hire people at Road and Bridge? We don't have the equipment. Yes, we did just get some new graders that we needed three years ago, okay? We're out pressure cleaning sidewalks, because we're told that's what downtown wants us to do, when we have thousands of miles of sidewalks that need to be fixed, okay? We can't get cement trucks to come and help us pour these sidewalks when we do get to go and do one, so, you know, we do one here and there to let the community look at, make it look like, well, they're doing something, but in the meantime, we're getting hammered as the workers, and it's not fair. And you all sit back and you go, aye, aye, you know, but you're not thinking. Y'all have been to Road and Bridge. You have all heard what we have to say, but nobody listens. When I first started working there 10 years ago, I had such inspiration. I loved this town. This was one of the most beautiful towns I've ever been in. It looks like Palm Bay. No disrespect to Palm Bay, but this town, when you all walked into the, to Road and Bridge the first day, I told you, the county commissioners are ruining this town, and you all laughed at me. And it's true. And I, like I said, I probably just put a big target on my back for my job, but I do my job. I'm not one of those ones that stand there and lean on a shovel every day. I've been everywhere, from the backlot ditches all the way up. I carry a CDL with the hazmat and a tanker's license. I can read a grade rod. Wherever they need me, I go. Have you all been there? Have you all seen what we really do there? I don't think so. I don't think you all are looking at the whole picture here. We have equipment out there that has been rusting. When Will was in there, he got equipment that was so useless, it's ridiculous. It's sitting there and it's rotting, but nobody listens. We can have these meetings all day long. Does it really matter? Because, you know, the town is pretty much ruined right now, and I just hope that the voters wake up and see what's really going on here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? Why do, why do they have these meetings during the day when the, when the workers of this town-
Why do they have these meetings during the day when the workers of this town can't come here and give their opinion? I had to take my day off to be here, because I just feel that John, my purpose in coming here was because of John and him getting a raise. And, you know, why aren't they having these meetings when the real workers in this town can come in here and give their opinions? Thank you.
Thank you. Having given ample opportunity and seen no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Councilor? Thank you. Commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, staff will ask the Commission to move forward and approve the proposed developers' agreement and to afford the chairman to execute same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'd just like to comment on this. I'm not, I'm not happy about it either. And to the people who spoke against development, I don't know if you attended the meeting that we had, which was in the evening. It started at 6 o'clock. It was October 16th, and that was a joint meeting with County Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board. We will be having a follow-up probably in late January, early February. At that meeting, I said it, it's on videotape. I, I think we probably should hit the pause button for a period of time and allow the infrastructure to catch up with development. So it's not that it hasn't been stated, it's been stated. And we are gonna have a follow-up meeting. The problem with what we have right now is we have to follow the rules as they stand currently. You know, we have to change the rules, you know, in order to oppose something. So that's what we're looking to do, to change the rules. So please be a part of it in late January, early February. The meetings are always posted. And that meeting, as I said, the previous one was in the evening. I would expect the next one to be in the evening. It's gonna, because it'll be a joint meeting again. It began at 6 o'clock, and it went till 10:00 PM. So about half of it was, you know, we were speaking, County Commission and Planning and Zoning was speaking, and then about the other half was public comment. So it was about, you know, went on for, like I said, four hours, and half of it was public comment. So please be here next time, please be part of it. And you can watch the video. It's four hours, but, you know, it's an interesting topic. It's an interesting topic, and it's meaningful to all of us. So just to add that to the record. And thank you for your comments today.
Thank you. I just wanna temper everybody's expectations. We did have a joint meeting with P and Z, and I think a lot was learned, a lot was discussed, and we took great public input. The downside with Senate Bill 180, there can be no changes, there can be no reduction, there can be no limitations upon the actions of planning, zoning, and development. You're aware of that?
I'm aware of that, and I'm aware of the House bill also. So you wanna contact Representative Brackett, there's a House bill. The Senate bill's been around, I think, for months. They're both very troubling. They both take away our decision-making power here locally, and so that takes away your opportunity to comment on any of this. Everything will be decided by the state, and how many people are gonna travel to Tallahassee to speak to them? And a lot of things they decide are decided in the hallway, you know? I mean, that's the standard operating procedure, as I've been told. So, but you're right, we need to factor all of this in.
And I don't disagree with you. I just am stating that, you know, I don't want the expectations to be that if they come to this meeting in January, that all will be fixed and resolved, and there'll be a stoppage of full doses and, and I just don't wanna create that thought process, because none of, none of which can happen at this point. And I do believe that there is a tremendous limitation on home rule and how we envision our county and how we want to maintain it. And it's unfair, it's inappropriate, yes, we'll say that, but the state has offered a mandate, like the word offered, offered a mandate that gives us tremendous limitation on our ability to navigate the planning and zoning process.
That's very true. We never know what's coming out of Tallahassee, but I still encourage everyone to participate locally.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'd just like to, I understand the consternation or frustration, and I know that, again, as Commissioner Moss mentioned and yourself, that there has been a joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically concerning planned developments. But I would like to point out, so just so it's understood, that this project, this PD, was approved back in December 3rd of 2024, and the item before you is the development agreement memorializing the improvements, infrastructural improvements that are required consistent with that planned development. So the project was already approved, and this development agreement is memorializing those on- and off-site improvements as it relates to the project.
Thank you, County Administrator. I, but I did wanna address that. I did not want the public to be misled in any way. Thank you. Well, it's back to the board. Mr. Chair, move approval. Second. I have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I reluctantly agree to it.
Motion to approve unanimously. Next item is 11A2, which is a public hearing in consideration for the roadway jurisdiction transfer agreement between Florida Department of Transportation and Indian River County to transfer county roads onto state highway system. Good morning, Ms. Freeman.
Good morning. Brian Freeman, MPO, Staff Director, and I have a presentation for you on the proposed transfer agreement. This is a couple of years in the making to get to the point where we are today. And first, I just want to summarize, when we're talking about county roads and state roads, what do we really mean? We're talking about who is responsible for the maintenance and improvement of the road. So in the case of county roads, the county is the entity that's responsible for the maintenance, the resurfacing of the roads. Any widening or capacity improvements would be programmed through the county's capital improvements program. The work that's going on on 66th Avenue at this time is a real good example of a widening project that's gone through the county capital improvement program process. Generally, these are funded with impact fees or one-cent sales tax revenues. We also often apply for and receive grants from the Florida Department of Transportation, such as through the TRIP program, that's the Transportation Regional Incentive Program, to get some supplemental funding for that. Sometimes for county roads, we will program those through the MPO if we have an agreement in place with FDOT to do so. And the work that's been done so far on County Road 510 is an example of that. One of the limitations of going that route is FDOT can only fund that project with federal funds and not any of the state funds that FDOT works with in their work program, because it's considered an off-system road. In the case of state roads, Florida Department of Transportation is responsible for the maintenance and resurfacing of the roads. If there's any additional landscaping, really anything more than sod in the right-of-way, then the local government, which could be a city or a county, would be responsible for that additional landscaping, and that would be through an agreement with FDOT. When it comes to capacity projects such as widening, those are gonna be programmed through the MPO. And in the case of the state roads, they can be funded with both state and federal funds. And the different improvement projects that have been done, State Road 60 and US 1 over the years are examples of widening projects that have gone through that MPO process. Shown on the map here in green are all of the current state roads in Indian River County. And so this is primarily US 1, State Road 60, A1A on the Barrier Island. All three of the causeways that go across the lagoon are also state roads. So one of those is State Road 60, but also you have the La Bosa Causeway, which is State Road 510, and then the 17th Street Bridge, which is also designated as State Road 656. And then also Interstate 95, and then way out in the western part of the county, the Florida Turnpike, those are also state roads. And shown on blue on the map are the roads that are proposed to be a part of the transfer agreement. And basically, these roads are gonna provide east-west connectivity in the northern and the southern parts of Indian River County. And so that's through the remaining parts of 510 and a two-and-a-half-mile section of 512 in the northern part of the county, and then Ozil Road in the southern part of the county. And these go from US 1 to I-95 in both cases. Just a quick overview of the roads themselves. In the case of County Road 510, it's just under six miles of roadway that's being transferred. And all six miles of that road are currently in the MPO's Transportation Improvement Program as part of a widening project, which is divided into a total of five segments, and construction has recently started on the first of those five segments. The part of the road that's already a state road is just, looks like it's 2.6 miles, that goes from US 1 to A1A, includes the causeway. In the case of 512, as I mentioned already, it's two-and-a-half miles of roadway from I-95 to 510. And this was widened from two lanes to four lanes by Indian River County back in 2009. FDOT will be assuming the responsibility for maintenance of that roadway and any future resurfacing of that roadway. And looking farther out into the long term, there is a six-lane widening project that's identified in the MPO's long-range plan, but that's towards the outer years of the 25-year plan. The other sections of 512 will remain county road. In the case of Ozil Road or 9th Street Southwest, this is already designated as County Road 606. It will become State Road 606, but the Ozil Road name will also remain. It's 7.8 miles of road to be transferred from I-95 to US 1. The sections of the road that are east of 58th Avenue were widened by Indian River County in different phases in previous years, and FDOT has the widening project that's under construction right now from 58th Avenue to I-95, along with the new interchange, and that is expected to be completed in 2027. And the aerial image here is the new interchange that's under construction at this time. There are two railroad crossings that are affected by the transfer at 510 and Ozil Road. Currently, the county has maintenance agreements with FEC for those crossings. And at a future board meeting, staff will be presenting an agreement that involves both FEC and FDOT to transfer those county obligations to FDOT. So they will be taking on those maintenance obligations at those two railroad crossings. Obviously, there's a lot of beneficial aspects to the transfer agreement for the county, especially financially, when you're considering the substantial costs that are involved in both improving these roads and maintaining these roads. And so that will be very beneficial to the county in the years to come. Just kinda looking at the transfer process and where we are, it's taken quite a bit of coordination between county staff and FDOT District 4 staff to get the agreement in place to where it is today. And after approval by the board today, it still needs to be approved by FDOT District 4, and then finally by FDOT Secretary Perdue, which is expected to occur soon after the New Year, so in early 2026. And for two of the roads, the transfer will occur immediately upon execution of the agreement by the FDOT Secretary. That's for 512 and Ozil Road. For the 510 transfer, the agreement is structured so that the transfer will occur when the final phase of widening receives right-of-way certification for that project. So that's expected to be several years down the road before that finally, that handoff occurs. And so staff's recommendation is that the board approve both of the resolutions, along with the agreement, and also authorize staff to take any of the actions that are necessary to complete the transfer process. Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Airman, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 11A3, which is miscellaneous budget amendments. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kristen Daniels, Budget Director. Before you today is Budget Amendment 6, which uses cash to fund rollover projects, grants, as well as compensated absences. Per Florida statute 129.062F, whenever the budget is amended using cash, a public hearing must be held. So today, staff recommends that after the public hearing is closed, the board approve the budget resolution amending the 2526 budget, and I am available if you have any questions.
I know you all had the opportunity to review. Any questions? Move staff request? Excuse me? No questions? Open public hearing? Oh, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Mr. Day. Having given ample opportunity and seeing no one coming forward, public hearing closed. Move staff request? We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, second by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. We're gonna take a brief recess for five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Meeting will now be called back to order. And next items, public items. We'll move on to county administrative matters, proposed commission meeting dates for the year of 2026.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you, you have the calendar year 2026 Board of Commission, Board of County Commission regular meeting dates. We did, we did verify and looked at these dates as it relates to, I know some, you know, many attend the Floor Association of, you know, Counties Conference. In addition to this meeting schedule, I have added, and I'll touch upon, the items in Section 102.01, the Board of County Commission Meetings and Procedures. And in this regard, we are seeking direction, or your direction, to the county attorney with regard to potential changes. In section, or subsection 1, looking to add, the annual schedule of regular meetings shall be approved by the board no later than the first regular meeting in November each year for the ensuing calendar year. And subsection 4, as the board knows, is aware, the agenda items for staff for the next county commission meeting are generally due the Wednesday after the meeting, because it has to be before, and make it all the way through to the point where the county attorney and myself review those on Wednesday prior to the, the board commission meeting. So we are proposing some latitude there as it relates to the commission and the commission assistants submitting commission matters 10 days prior to the regular commission, and extending that to our constitutional officers and governmental agency, governmental agencies, whereby they could submit no later than 10 days prior, which would be the Friday before the meeting, and that would give us sufficient time, we believe, to process those. Previously, the board agenda packet was required to be, you know, delivered to the, the Board of County Commission by noon on Friday. I think in the last year, there's been three instances where we have not done it on Thursday, or we've gotten it late on Thursday. So we are proposing to move it up to, that the, that it would be completed and delivered before close of business on Thursday, preceding the commission meeting. So you're not, there's no instances where you would be receiving it on Friday. Those are really the only changes that we have for your consideration, and depending on your input on that, the county attorney, I believe, is prepared to draft the appropriate revisions to the ordinance. So with that, I'll return it to you. Staff recommends approval of the Board of County Commission regular meeting dates for the calendar year 2026, as well as direction from the, as well as providing direction for the Board of County, the board for the county attorney to prepare an ordinance amend, amending the code to clarify Sections 102.1, subsection 1, and subsection 4. Return to the board for commentary and discussion.
Commissioners. All good?
Do you need a motion?
Is noted, noted that we have no meeting in July?
At the budget workshop.
And but one meeting in?
We used to have no meetings in August.
Excuse me?
We used to have no meetings in August.
I don't, I don't think we ever had a time where we didn't have a meeting in August. It's always been a minimum of one.
No.
And July, July, we historically had a few. But it's all good.
Need a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, county administrator matters, the County Administrator Employment Agreement. County Administrator.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you respectfully and consistent with the contract whereby I'm, shall schedule renewal of the county administrator's agreement for consideration by the board. I'm requesting your approval of this contract renewal. I'm deeply committed to Indian River County, this board, our staff, and the community. It is, truly is an honor to serve as county administrator, and believe renewal is merited, not only as a recognition of our shared progress, but as a message of stability and direction to our organization and the public. Over the past two-and-a-half years, we've navigated significant organizational and cultural changes together. We've moved beyond, in many respects, patterns that have held us back, invested in restructuring, and working to re-nourish the organization and laying a foundation for long-term change. We prioritized our employees and began to build a momentum toward our shared mission of dedicated to Indian River County through service excellence. I believe we're seeing how data and performance tracking are improving our outcomes from community services to building and permitting. We've seen how master planning in parks and rec and currently in utilities, as well as in public works, as we evaluated the, all the, our streets where we do resurfacing and identified which ones needed to be done first and foremost. I think that's good planning, and so we are making smarter investments in, in those areas of infrastructure, addressing them, also as well as stormwater, lagoon protection, resiliency. We have provided equipment upgrades, and Barbara was here earlier mentioning, we have, I think in the last couple of years, we've purchased more equip, equipment for public works and road and bridge to help them, give them the resources, do their job. We did add some additional crews, and then, all with the intent of, as it relates to road resurfacing, if you recall, in prior years, we did approximately 10 miles. This past year, we did 26 miles, to the tune of about $267,000 per mile. And why would we do that? You know, we did it at accelerated pace with your direction, and that arguably saves us a significant amount of money from $267,000 a mile to close to more than $1 million if we would have to do a full-depth reclamation. I believe we made real progress in permitting and development review. We see customer satisfaction is riding, rising. We're using performance metrics to drive continued improvement. Our goal remains clear, predictable, timely, and transparent public review process. But, you know, this, this transformation hasn't been without its challenges, and I certainly appreciate the diverse perspectives and opinions each of you bring. My commitment remains unwavering to lead, to lead transparently, empower our staff, and turn our strategic goals into measurable results and outcome. And I believe we've remained fiscally responsible. I think this budget year highlights that, while we are planning for the future. I don't believe, I certainly, I'm not perfect, and I don't think any organization is, but we are learning, adapting, and moving forward. I believe what's needed now is clarity, staff, leadership, and the community. And to be honest, my family and I need to know the direction of this commission. The agenda proposes a three-year contract renewal. To be clear, to, with regard to the one statement, this contract does not contemplate any salary increase. The salary increase that was provided earlier, you know, at the outset of this fiscal year was already included, so there is no additional salary increase being contemplated by this contract. The contract does include previously discussed updates by this board, specifically back in January, when we talked about having consistent deferred compensation language. It does include an additional year of accrual for vacation. And then the other item that it includes is a provision for an annual performance review, where all members would individually complete a review, and then it would be tabulated, brought back before this board to discuss publicly that review in totality. There is no fiscal impact to this contract as it relates to this year, because funds are already budgeted. And then the last, I would acknowledge that I, I understand that, you know, we've, have endured some distractions and I think some mischaracterizations of routine matters, and they can sometimes undermine our focus. And I'm certainly hopeful that we can stay centered on what truly matters, we're delivering results for our community. In closing, I just would respectfully request your approval. I certainly thank you for your, your leadership and your guidance over the last two-and-a-half years, and I thank you for your consideration and continued support today. With that, I'll return to the board for discussion.
Thank you, County Administrator. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I can. I heard the Administrator mention a couple of things about distractions, and trust me, I've heard that from the public as well. And any distractions with respect to any types of publications that are in our community, I will say, those parties reach out to me, and it's been my practice for 36 years to respond to media. I think it's a bad practice not to respond to media. Not saying that the other four aren't contacted, but just for the record, I'd like to say that. Mr. Chair, if I could, just a very brief recollection of when we hired the county administrator, and his contract began August of 17th of 2023. I think the whole community and the spirit of this agency felt refreshed. I truly do, and all of us know it's in the best interest of the county. We had John come to us with over 30 years of experience, an educator, a leader, and we heard things about result-oriented leadership, solution-driven government, and single points of failure. We also, if you recall, that first year, we talked about mission statements. We talked about strategic plans, which we'll, we'll get to that in a moment, as well as our values, as well as a salary study. And as important, last year, we implemented the at-will employment process, which included over 60 employees, which has been used two or three times since its inception. And then we fast forward to September 10th of '24, and if we recall, there was a rather lengthy and often heated discussion on the Administrator's, back then, his performance. And one thing that came out of that was his desire to effectively communicate better with us. In fact, I think he said that not only in September of '24, but again in December of '24, about being a more effective communicator, which I think we all agreed upon that. In between those two meetings, let's not recall or forget that we in fact had Hurricane Milton. So sometimes when you, when you look at the leader of an agency, there can be outside distractions, i.e. hurricanes, sometimes something going on in the community that is abnormal, COVID, for example, a down economy. Those are true things that will test a true leader. And in the process, absent hurricane, which, Milton, which we could say was relatively speaking, a minor storm, economy, again, was relatively strong, and we didn't have any outside influences like COVID that would truly test the leadership of a leader. And then we fast forward through the summer, of course, of '25, and we don't have to be reminded, but on May 1st, the sheriff gave his budget, which as we know was, was the talk, and I think all five of us talked to the Administrator about that. And we also know that simultaneously, he had requested his, his performance pay, which was effectuated, then it came to us as a discussion. And then I recall Commissioner Irman being rather stern at one particular meeting. So then, we get over that hurdle, and I will say that the Administrator did a, did a fine job with respect to the sheriff's budget. No one's arguing that. And then we fast forward to seeing some things that are not brought upon by this commission, but are brought upon by employees. And those, of course, drove the media to some extent. With respect to our planning director, when that drove the media to some extent. With respect to our Planning Director, when that went down, I was notified, and then I notified the Administrator, who did not and was not aware of the situation that, that the planner was in. I found that a little unusual in that he, being the leader of the agency, probably should have had some type of communication with someone. That afternoon, he and I in my office talked about the resolution of that particular employee. And my philosophy then was, he's at-will, let's separate the employee. Well, we know that there was an arrangement made, and we lived with it, and we talked about it, and it was in the public. And then six weeks later, there's another situation with a department head, and again, the communication on the backside was in fact that there may have been some deficiencies. In fact, in his six-month annual report, annual appraisal, there were indications that, that he could do better. There was also discussions that in fact, that employee might be separated. At some point on the 13th of October, I met with the Administrator, and we somewhat agree that the Planning Department Director could have been handled differently. On the afternoon of the 13th of October, I suggested to Administrator that this employee's at-will, if we're going to do this, let's do it this way. The public opinion of how the policy is and how we separate employees was not favorable. And we agreed on that. At 7:58 PM on the 13th, all of us received an email about the Public Works Director separating and a discussion about Labor Attorney being communicated with. And then of course, what was very popular in the media was the auto allowance. Well, then the following commission meeting, we modified that. That wasn't exactly communicated with me, and I say that, Commissioners, on the heels of last year when we talked about effective communicating. Additionally, if you recall, that December of '24, when our General Counsel was on board. And one thing that we talked about was in fact, weekly communications. And I will say, General Counsel has done a fantastic job, even in her absence, of communicating with these Commissioners about what's going on, what the topics are going on. That started what we believe was a trend of having public evaluations and discussions in full transparency on this dais of both the Attorney and the Administrator. Following that, the Administrator also began giving us weekly reports, weekly Administrator reports that were emailed to each of us to better communicate with us. And those were refreshing. Those kept us in the loop. Fact is, we only meet with the Administrator, I only meet with him on Mondays for an hour, an hour and a half. Administrator performed those duties sporadically. In fact, the last Administrator weekly report that we have received, that I have received, was five months ago, the first week of June. I would submit that that is not effectively communicating. So we fast forward to the, to the Sheriff's Budget and all of the issues that came along with that. Again, I will compliment him on handling that. Additionally, the back and forth was going on. What has clouded this commission, again, has been external forces that have brought things to our commissions, their opinions and the like. I'll say again, I respond when the media calls. That has been my policy, and it will always be my policy. Absent responding to the media, it will appear as if you either aren't engaged or perhaps avoiding something. I will say this, if anyone has any hesitation, the committee that will oversee the conversation with the Sheriff, those arguments have been forwarded, not only on the Sheriff's behalf, and I say that because this is important in case someone questions where I'm going with this, is that essentially both briefs are, not essentially, both briefs are there. That commission will hear both briefs. Time certain will be an opportunity for oral arguments, which I think the public or they should know. We have an attorney in Tallahassee that is representing us along with our General Counsel, which I think we are very well positioned after reading both of them and, and being somewhat familiar with the, with the policy or the, the process of the Sheriff's Budget. I feel very comfortable in that. In other words, the Administrator has put us in a position to defend that. So in thinking of November 18th, which was when I had scheduled, and I believe the Administrator was familiar with this, an opportunity to talk on the 18th of, of November about, as well as General Counsel Schuler, about their progress. Some call it a report card. I purposely waited for General Counsel to come back from, from her leave, which is appreciated. And by the way, she came back earlier than expected, so that is very refreshing. So then I'm thinking about how we're going to navigate this, knowing that Administrator's contract is up on April 17th of 2026, a three-year contract. Mind you, in the last two weeks, I've had at least two sit downs with the Administrator. And then Thurs, this past Thursday, the 30th of October, the agenda comes out, and to my surprise, I see his request for a contract renewal and/or extension. Thinking that was odd, because that had not been communicated with me, had not been communicated with me, albeit we have met. This was entered in Granicus on the 18th of October. So that was the Saturday, and the Administrator had, had entered that. And yes, we know he's been busy with a variety of things. To effectively communicate with this board, two separate meetings, this was never brought up. It never brought up to me that, hey, by the way, on the 4th of November, I'm going to have a contract extension. I still don't understand why and haven't been explained on why the urgency to have it heard today. Follow-up with that, the, the general theme is that we've been somewhat, at least on my part, inconsistent with communicating. One would think that if you're going to talk about a contract extension, that you would share that with a Commissioner during the briefings that you have weekly. We talk about everything else from waste management to manatees, but for whatever reason, that wasn't brought to my attention. And to say I was shocked on Thursday afternoon, when I got the agenda, as the public got the agenda as well, was a bit, a bit troubling, to say the least. Now, with respect to the first six or eight months of the Administrator, we had some very extensive discussions, and I think that we all were excited to see the direction. One particular item that is very, very important in the leadership role is in fact, their strategic plan. And we've talked about the strategic plan, and we've seen the strategic plan. The strategic plan for the leadership of this agency, from the Directors to the, to the Division Leaders to the line employees, is very important. Today being November the 4th, that strategic plan is not completed. And you may hear that, that was purposely delayed for greater board clarity or what have you. But if we're going to have a model on how to run an agency, obviously communications is paramount. But as important, what's our road plan? What's, what's our map? Our strategic plan, as, as many of us know, is woven into the direction of the agency. Our strategic plan is often reflected in performance and review appraisals, right? Those should dovetail together. But the fact that we have not completed the strategic plan is, is somewhat troubling. You couple that with this basically being sprung upon me, I don't know about the rest of you, on October 30th of, of the renewal. And my guess is, the renewal is that the Administrator wants to know direction for his, for his family. I understand that. I think it's awfully unusual that, obviously within the contract, it says 90 days prior to, which would put us around January the 17th. I think we would have an opportunity for even more clarity. And I want to go back briefly and, and talk about the budget process that's in Tallahassee. I would submit today that our work here on a local level is essentially done. This commission will review those facts, and a determination will be made. That's out of our hands with respect to having outstanding things that are on the line. I do know that recently, the Administrator has his, his, his third assistant, which is fine, and she's only been here seven days, and appears to me in the first few days to be very engaged in his comings and goings and keeping him on task. I don't know how the other Commissioners feel with respect to how the Administrator communicates, gets back to us on certain projects, shares certain items. From my viewpoint, I am continuously asking and reminding of things that I think are somewhat significant in the overall picture of the agency, and I simply don't get those. And that is the frustrating point that I'm, that I'm seeing. But in the interest of time, Mr. Chair, I will yield my comments with, with follow-up.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be glad to. I, I can't agree with a lot of what Vice Chairman said, but I understand at least what's been transpiring here over the last few months, or probably longer, that when we hired Mr. Katanich, we basically demanded a change in the culture of this organization. We were not seeing customer service where it should be. We were not seeing just things in general to where we weren't serving the public well. I know when I was elected in 2020, that was one of my first priorities with then-County Administrator Jason Brown, who I, who I think the world of. He didn't have enough staff in place for various reasons. I mean, most, most of you all know that, that he was being very physical responsibly, to the point where it was probably hurting the organization a little bit. And I think he, you know, again, I think he did a, I think he did a good job, but I think there were some changes that need to be made. And that's what we asked Mr. Katanich to come in to do, and I think he's tried very hard to do those things, yet while staying within the budget and keeping the taxpayer in mind the whole time. And I think we've been successful at that. Can we find fault in things that he's done or not done? Absolutely. I don't know how many of in here would, would want that job, but I can't think of a harder job to have, to be pulled in five different directions by five different personalities that sit up here. I can't think of what, you know, his staff and the, and the general public has to say. So there will be some, some trips. And I, and I'm not so sure, by a few of us on this board, that Mr. Katanich was even accepted when he was hired. I think there was, there was other people that applied for the job that we were looking, that some of us were looking for, that, that wouldn't have been a good fix, because it wasn't, it wasn't a good, it just wasn't a good, a good idea for that in general. So, but hopefully we can overcome that. But I think that, that he has tried extremely hard. I think he's excelled exceptionally well in other areas. I think there's room for improvement in other areas. Communication is one of them. Mr. Vice Chairman, I agree with you on that. I think that can be improved. The issues that I've had in the past with the county Administrator have been, let's move a little faster on certain projects. But in the end, everything that I've asked him has finally got done. Did it get done as fast as I wanted to? No. But I don't, you know, I don't have the problems and the issues that he faces every day. I'm the conduit from right here from our constituents and relay back to him and the staff as to what I think we need to do into this board. I think, from what my discussions have been for him, and I didn't know it was coming up till Thursday, like, like you did, but I understand why. I think with what's happened lately, and I think it's been unfairly done in the newspaper and in the media and in this building, because Commissioners, as you heard me say in the very beginning when we talked about pulling this or not pulling this, I think this board, I think all five of us, and I'm calling myself out, I think we have been dysfunctional in the way we have, have managed some of the issues that have come before us, and I'm, and I'm very disappointed in that. I believe that the media is, is getting information, for whatever reasons, to try to discredit not only some of the members of the board, but our county administration. Frankly, I think that is the wrong thing to do. We may not can talk to each other about issues, but we can work together as a team when it's time to pull together as a team. I'm a sports guy, and that's very important to me. We are the team, we are the team president. The constituents are the team owners. We are the team president, the managers. We set the policies. We tell the coach what to do. If we're trying to undermine our coach every day, time and time again, for various reasons that, that I don't understand, that we're not trying to work with him to communicate a positive attitude and a positive culture, we're just as much as fault as, as, as he is, and we're, but we're blaming it on him, like we're untouchable, and we're blaming it on him. We have to focus, give him direction, work with him, support him in order to carry out what we, what we need to do in this county. I don't know when or why, but we have thousand employees in this organization. Some of them are going to make bad life decisions. It happens. We're all human beings. I think to use the quote, what you said in the media show is, you know, we are fallible as human beings. We have our faults, and we don't always make the best decision. Did our Planning and Zoning Director, we don't know what demons he was fighting. Sure, he had been arrested for DUI, but we knew that, and then everybody knew that. But we don't know what demons he was fighting. He made a bad decision in life. He lost his job. How he lost his job, the policy that he, how he lost his job, that's something, if it doesn't apply or doesn't work in that situation, this board can change it. So why was it headlines in the news? When Rich Furkle was here, he was let go by Mr. Katanich due to pressure from Commissioners and developers and builders in this town. We let him go. His name, his name wasn't in the paper. His bedside manner was atrocious, but he was a darn good engineer, but he was let go for various reasons, because he wasn't being part of the team at the time. That didn't make headlines. The Public Works Director leaves. I don't know if he was ever a good fit for the county. I'll say that publicly, and I've told him that personally, that, you know, he needed to work harder on his relations. Maybe he did, or maybe he didn't. But you know what? When he left, he didn't come back after things were found out, and then all of a sudden it gets in the paper that the county, that the Public Works Director has, has crashed the, the, basically the, the county's cyber system. He's taken all his files and deleted. That made the paper when it wasn't even a story. He shows up the following Monday or Tuesday and brings everything in. But boy, we were sure quick to discredit this board and our county administrator. That's what the problem is, commissioners. It's not Mr. Katanich yet. Is he perfect? No. Do we need to do a better job? Yes. But we need to support him and quit undermining, and I'll use the word that I've used when I've talked to a few people in this room, we need to quit sniping. In other words, you know, we need to quit throwing out these bombs and see if he can move around them. I am totally over this. We need to settle this here. If it would make y'all better to give him, because I guess, Counselor, we can bring yours or his contract up anytime and do whatever we want to with him, right? We can do that?
Yes.
Either one of y'alls, right?
We are at-will employees.
Right. So we could bring that up anytime. If it would make some of you feel better, let's put it out a year. But sit here today to discredit him or have him, fire him, if you want to call it, would be the wrong thing to do today. He did an excellent job on the budgets ever since he's been here. He's done an excellent job on this budget. I understand what the vice chairman said. He's correct about that process. But we need Mr. Katanich to get through and settle this distraction that we've had with our sheriff of Any River County, that I'll remind each one of you this never happened in 100 years. This is the first time this has ever happened. And frankly, I'm ashamed of it. I'm ashamed for us. I'm ashamed for the sheriff. I think we did the right thing, but I think it's the wrong thing to do, and the taxpayer dollars are being spent for this, to pay a lawyer in Tallahassee. Everything's ridiculous, but we have an obligation to the taxpayer. We promised to keep the mileage the same, and we did that. So now is not the time to tell him, you know, sir, we don't want to renew your contract and basically go find another job. We don't need to do that. We owe it to pull together as an organization, this board, the public, all the department heads, let's get it done. Because you know what? I would tell Mr. Katanich, and I've told him this before, if a department head is not doing their job, find somebody else that will. Don't, you know, do it. Let's get it done. Let's do what we need to do. Let's make things happen and quit being the dysfunctional Brady Bunch up here on this dais. We got to work together for the public to find a sense of direction and make sure. We've had so many good things happen in this county in the last two and a half years, it's being overshadowed by headlines of a public works director that made a wrong decision in his life, and then a public planning and zoning director make a bad decision in life, and a public works director that kind of never really got it, in my opinion, and it just didn't work out. And that's fine, because we've got good people in there that can lift us up right now and lead us through until we find somebody. He's already hired John Stoll, who's a former employee of this county, that I've talked to numerous employees down there in planning and zoning. Time and time again, they were excited about having John Stoll come back to the fold. So commissioners, I could go on and on, but I think we need to look at our own house before we start blaming the county administrator. And I'm going to leave it at that, and I'll save further comments if needed for later. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, I just want to address something that you made a statement about how the information on the public works director getting out with some kind of computer...
That he crashed all his files or something?
He didn't crash, he deleted files, right? I want you to know that you stated that that occurred by information that was delivered to the media. That part is right, but it was the county administrator. Wait, wait, wait. You shake your head all you want. I want you to know that the county administrator spoke to the media, and the county administrator spoke to all of us, stating that the public works director has deleted files. And basically, at that point, he was near getting ready for a conviction at that point. It was not the media playing. It was not information from this commission. It was from the county administrator, okay? And it was an effort after the third time he had been written down or written up or written somewhere that that occurred. I just want to clarify that because nobody sniped anybody. There was no misunderstanding. It was information directly from the county administrator and his conversation with the member of the media. It had nothing to do with this commission. This commission was told of the information and the discovery of where that, in total transparency, that the information was no longer available, deleted, and I guess it was a project that you were going to on, in Point West, that could not be found, okay? A meeting that by the public...
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me.
Well, I think this is a very thorough explanation, and I appreciate it, but I think the comment that Commissioner Ehrman was trying to make was that it was unfortunate that that article was so premature and filled with what has proven to be inaccurate information.
And the county administrator is the one who released that information.
That was the point of that.
The county administrator, that's the point.
I understand you.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so there's no reason to discuss that any further. Any event, and I appreciate that. As far as, I may see where this is going today, and that's just fine, but I just want the public to know the truth. The information that was given was given by one author, okay? Please.
So I would like to respond to that because there was an article written that I felt was premature regarding Adi, our public works director. And in the course, you know, as you know, there was an ultimatum at the end of the article, like, well, you know, I guess we'll see other articles if he doesn't respond, because I did not want to participate in some of the comments that I felt were, the questions that were, it seemed like there was more character assassination on Adi's part. But I did, in the interest of one, I did request that we go off the record, and I advised him because I didn't want him to find out about this and then say, we were hiding this even further. I did speak with every one of you. And I have the text right here where I've confirmed through commissioners most of the details pertaining to the former public works director and the deletion of files. I've requested, I told, I was very adamant that this was a possibility and it was being investigated, and we were looking at it. That's what was said, and I requested that that not be publicized until we knew for a fact. And then I got on a Sunday that email I've confirmed through commissioners. So what I meant, what I did not want, you know, the reporter to think that we were hiding information and to kind of cover that up, but to let him know that we were looking at something.
I just wanted to clarify, and thank you for that explanation. Womisler, I used to handle public information for an organization for quite some time, and, you know, the request for off the record is one that's onerous, but one must realize that we're speaking with an individual who writes for a living.
And he honored, he said he would honor that request.
Yes.
And then subsequently was informed on Sunday that he had received verifying information concerning everything he needed to know about the deletion of emails.
From commissioners?
From commissioners.
Interesting.
Which...
Didn't say.
Can you elaborate? Because...
I can read the text. "I've confirmed through commissioners most of the details pertaining to the former public works director and the deletion of files." And I immediately let him know that the individual was coming in tomorrow and informed us that the files are available. I was asking him to hold off for the purposes of allowing us the opportunity and not to write an article that was, I felt would be inappropriate until we had all the information.
Let me ask you something, and we have to just talk about it. You know my sentiments about the public works director. They were very strong and very positive, correct?
Correct.
And that intercepted from the 93 days for County Road 512. And I gave him high praise. In what world would you think that I would ever say anything negative about the guy that I was constantly cheerleading to you? So it was not I. That's clear. I want you to know that when you're dealing with the media, and I don't know if I'm saying it or not there, we have five public relations people in the building that are disseminating information in different departments, which we've never had before. I will tell you that if you're speaking with the media, you're speaking with the pen. And I have never, was I mentioned in that article? No, because I had no input, okay? No input.
I wasn't...
Can we get back to...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just...
We are on the topic. Thank you. I appreciate you.
It doesn't seem like you do, but...
No, no, I don't appreciate...
I feel like we're down a winding road. This is distraction. This is nothing to do with the contract. This is just a side issue item, which again is a clear indication of what Commissioner Ehrman was trying to say earlier. And I do think that this is also a very good example of some of the difficulty that John has in making decisions, because there's five people up here telling him five different things, and you guys want him to jump at what you say, irregardless of what other commissioners say. And not all the commissioners, even in this conversation, obviously agreed on the performance of one of the department heads or how that whole thing was handled. So I think this is a clear, clear illustration of some of those issues. And again, this is a governance by a board, a collective. It's not governance by one person or one individual. And I also think that there needs to be a higher level of professionalism between the commissioners amongst themselves.
Thank you for that. It is, it's a governed board by five individuals, but it's led by one, the county administrator. We are a strong county administrative form of government, constitutionally run, creating leadership through policy and legislation. But once again, it is led by one, one county administrator. He is the leader. We have hired a leader. So we have discussed, everything that we have discussed on the dais, correct me if I'm wrong, John, have I not discussed any of this with you in private, in the meeting?
I mean, yes, I mean, we had a discussion yesterday regarding this contract. I had, I attempted to have a discussion. I think actually I had a discussion with every member, although I didn't want to discuss it today.
Okay, so I don't think anything is unwarranted, unnecessary, a distraction. I believe it is appropriate. Something was said that I don't want the public misled, that that information went in one direction. We identified that that information you did give under the premise that it would be between you and I kind of thing, or, you know, off the record. Again, I'm standing straight out, there is no off the record. There is no off the record. We are a total, we're committed to and totally obligated for a transparent form of government for the people, and if we're speaking with the media, it's all bets off. It's whatever comes out. Again, you fire a weapon, can't start the bullet. So you can't fire it and then say, why, I didn't mean to do that, or I asked if that was, it just doesn't happen. Now, it's onerous if they do, if you say, well, I don't want to do that. Sometimes you want to play that relationship level. I've done it for many years.
Just would like to, I think that's a mischaracterization that I was firing a bullet to try to make harm somebody. I was trying to clarify. So I...
I'm sorry, maybe that was a wrong assessment, and I did not mean that analogy in that way. It's just saying, once you take the action, that action will have a result.
That action is duly noted for next time I engage with that reporter.
Okay, or any reporter for that matter. But that's another one of the challenges, because we have about four or five people in the building that are disseminating information.
That's a very untrue statement. You continue to characterize it as if we have all these PIOs, and we do not. We have communication specialists within each department that help communicate the projects that those departments are doing, and to call them PIOs is inaccurate. But this also goes back to continuing to mischaracterize things in a way that feeds a certain narrative.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, I know where this is going, but I have a responsibility for the public and for all of you. I can count. But I will say, I appreciate what was said, but I just want to recall back to the interview experience with Mr. Katanich. Again, I know I made the motion to, let's go forward, okay? We narrowed it down, and it was getting very fatiguing. I had great hope and great promise, and some of it actually came to fruition on a positive note. But during the conversation, John Katanich said, I asked about changes and bringing in different personnel, and his statement was, assessment is key, evaluation of operation and given resources. It will take time. I said, what is time? And the time was, well, I got to give it six months to a year. Fair?
That was to do the organizational...
Yes.
That is correct. And it took far less than six months. I mean, it took about six months.
It was...
We implemented stuff, implemented items in the ensuing fiscal year.
And it was, so it was within six months, it was identified that you had a feeling that the culture was bad. Yes, there was some shortcomings. And from that point on, there was an immediate erosion of institutional knowledge and the cultural experience in Any River County within the organization. And there were changes. We had a reorg meeting, another reorg, and then the chart was moved a few times. I'll tell you that it has been a time of change, and again, if we know anything about an organization, change is tough. Change is not always received. Change is no, is not always embraced, especially when people are used to certain ways that are more convenient for them and for them and mine not on the public that we serve. So again, a difficult task, John. A difficult task that you had to perform. With that, we've had some consulting, a lot of consulting. Some was warranted. Some was additional experience to assist with the training and the changes and the adjustments that were necessary or perceived as necessary. Some were. But when you want to look back in retrospect, there is basically close to single digits as to the institutional knowledge that's in this building. And that has happened by design, direction, and for positive, a positive change. Some of it has happened. But by and far, there is really, it has eroded upon the communication and direction that we have. And we continually talked about silos and the way in which there is no communication between interdepartmental. And you said that you were applying an interdepartmental relationship to try to build that bridge. I, it's, maybe that's a work in motion, but it really doesn't happen all that much. Okay? And not criticism. It's, change is tough. And then the application and the approach and principles in order to get there are far more difficult. And I don't think that you can have a playbook to make those changes happen. It just has to happen with spirit, dedication, and constant leadership. Would you agree?
To a certain degree, I do.
Well, we, since we don't really have that, and I just want to talk about some of the consulting that we've done. We had something called the Satterly Report. Where did that go?
Actually, prior and the current ombudsman have been working continuous to implement that. And if we're going to go down this road, I would think when you talk about change, let's look at the building and permitting division because that was one of the most onerous and difficult ones to get to. And we now track KPIs, key performance indicators, and how, on the average time of review, we track the number of permits. So these are these reports and that you are receiving on a frequent basis as they're, as they're completed each month. I do forward them to you. Customer service. We started customer, implemented customer service survey to find out how well we're doing. And I can tell you that we've increased, you know, since the first surveys started in December of '24 and looking at October of '25, anywhere between 6% and 16%, you know? And specifically, when it comes to various satisfaction overall rating received. I mean, I could tell you, we started back in the 65s, and we're up in the 76s. So we are continuing to grow. I can see other areas where we are, you know, the question is, did the staff help me? You know, can help provide consistent answers? One of the problems that we had before. Back in December, the results that reported in November or January, 56% said yes. We're up in the 70s now. Staff responded in timely manner. Back in December of '24, 50%. You know, October 2025, which would be the September, 68%, 18% increase. You know, I mentioned previously in one of our meetings, you know, these things weren't being tracked before. We put a system in place to start tracking permits, tracking customer satisfaction and key performance indicators. So that's one area, I would say, has been a, an area where you have started seeing the change and you have started seeing the response of this. And there are other areas that I would suggest that it's happening as well. I don't, I mean, are there areas that we still need to work on? Without a doubt.
Okay. So, and MGO, the discussion, the discussion continues. And I appreciate that. And you're right, the ombudsman has been one to repair a lot of the shortcomings. Statistics are what statistics are, but we can throw the mean median mode. There are some that fall through the cracks. And those challenges that have been brought to your attention, or again, some, you know, where we could say it's five days, six days. There were some that were many months. And they fell through the cracks. And I will tell you that the ombudsman has repaired those cracks.
Well, in all fairness, I would say the department, you know, when we created Building and Facility Services, you know, the department director and his staff, as well as the ombudsman, they look at those monthly reports and they identify permits that are outstanding. You know, maybe they've gone beyond the 30 days, and they determine what the issue is, and then they work to resolve the issue. If it's an issue that the county is capable of resolving or are we waiting on documents or resubmittals? Because sometimes they're sitting there waiting on a resubmittal or something that has to be provided before we can move that permit along. So I, I mean, it's more than the ombudsman. It's a team effort. Ashley does a great job. Anthony does a great job. Will, Scott McAdams, Erica, they are all working together to move permits along. And the numbers, the data shows it. It's not, they're just pure descriptive statistics. We're not doing any special, you know, you know, R-square analysis, any correlation or anything like that. We're kind of using just descriptive statistics to make it at the most simplistic form. Where were we in December of '24? And where are we today in October of '25?
Can't disagree with you as far as the team effort. And I did not mean to capitalize on one individual.
She's great.
But I just want you to know that the ombudsman has taken tasks and traveled through the departments. As far as the members that you mentioned, you're doing an outstanding job.
The ombudsman is one of the positions, if you recall, that I advocated for, for this exact reason, to be able to cross departmental lines, to cross divisions, and help get things completed and/or move forward if you have an economic development project, if you have a affordable housing project, or if you're having, where we're finding, maybe there's a challenge.
Right. And again, as we've said many times, that if, if everything was rolling, you wouldn't need an ombudsman. But maybe perhaps one day, that position will be obsolete. And it, you know, again, I'm setting the bar high. But again, maybe the ombudsman can be doing something else because there's no need to have somebody travel each one of these tasks to get them through and the ones that fall through the cracks. I didn't say anything that I haven't said to you privately, correct? I'm going to remind you again. Because I, you know, I don't want anybody to think that this is time for dirty laundry. It's not. It's public information in total transparency that we have had some challenges, and you have worked with them, unarguably. I, I just, there were some projects. And again, some may seem insignificant. But when we make a commitment to the public and we say, "We're going to do something." And we vote on it as a board, and there's at least three that go in that direction. Well, that's the commitment that we have for the public, correct? Well, if that's the case, I just want to bring up a couple of challenges that I have. And one is Gifford Neighborhood Project. Thirty-second. And again, one could say, "Well, the public work, Public Works Director is no longer here." So, because we've had an interim, and then we, I get it. And the same thing with, anybody remember we talked about food trucks? Quite a while ago? And delay in the CRA? I, I just don't, what's happening with Sebastian? I mean, I was delighted to be there because it was exciting and to see the trucks and the commitment and elected officials get a picture. But I was under the impression that July was happening. And we had all discussed that. And that was a commitment with Sebastian, yourself, and this board, and their board, and it was working magically. I assume this is November. And to me, it was a little bit of a letdown. And I still can't get the right answer as to why it's November, other than I have a calendar.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure if it's, if you want to go there on every specific issue, we can certainly--
No, I, we don't--
I think Sean, at a meeting or a meeting before, explained that there were supply chain issues, and they were waiting on materials, and that's what was delaying that project. And he was very, he was crystal clear what was delaying that project. And the county has committed to, with that project. Actually, one of the, I think it's an example of one of the things that you all asked is to improve inner, to relationships with the cities. You know, if you go back to the recruitment brochure, I think we've done that. So I mean, I just, I just, I could provide an answer here for every item. I mean, it's, I guess--
I'm not tearing it down.
I'll follow up, I will follow up with a detailed memo to every member of this board on any question that's brought up here today.
We're saying that things, things--
I think I have provided in meetings this information, but I will do it again, you know? Because I think we're maybe losing sight of what I'm requesting is, I think it's meritorious. I think we're moving in the right direction. And yes, I am asking, the contract provides that the county administrator shall schedule the renewal of the agreement. And I'm doing it within the timely fashion that's set forth in the agreement. And I want to know for, I want to know for myself, for my family. I know staff members that have been anxious about this. And I just think it's appropriate, you know? I don't want to find out in the middle of the holiday season of where we are. So I-- And I did discuss this back in August with some that it was going to come in November. So I'll just say that.
I agree. And I thought it was coming a little later on. And I wanted the opportunity to be able to discuss these matters once again directly with you. We do hear from quite a few citizens, and they have concerns. And they want to know what's going on. And then on Thursday, when they see this on the agenda, they're saying, "Well, what's happening with all of this?" So you see the dilemma is in. I wanted to get it out, but I wanted to get it to you once again so we can have that retort, we can have a response. But there is no other alternative other than discuss it now at the meeting. I understand you want, and it's very important for your family to have that. I don't know if I feel comfortable with looking at a million-dollar decision for three years, a commitment, having some uncertainties. Personally, I feel that, and it has been identified by others, not just by me, that there is room for improvement. There is room for adaptation, for getting the ship on an even keel. And again, as I noted, it's, the task at hand is very difficult. Change is difficult. And there's a mechanism. I know I, I point out a rather popular hospitality chain many times. And we've, we have had some lengthy conversations about deployment and the mechanism. But it, but again, I don't think we have achieved that yet. Okay? As far as your personal, I like, okay? We have some very good conversations. I'm just looking at what you intend to do operationally for the citizens, that we create legislation and policy and the connectivity of it actually happening as opposed to being talked about it and talked about it in media or talk about it, talked about it in public circles or on social media, that really is not getting the job done. So me, I want your firm commitment that we're going hard and fast and forward and to the betterment of this county. I, without the opportunity of being able to speak in any great lengths, and yes, you're right, I don't want to articulate many of the concerns. We have talked about them. I would have wanted the opportunity. But I would feel more comfortable with going forward with, "Let's settle your concern for your family" and, and go with a one-year and coming back. And I know that probably wouldn't be palatable for you. You want a long-range plan. But we have a lot of long-range plans that haven't narrowed down either. I think that I, personally, I would feel more comfortable with it not feeling 100% about your ability. Don't take me wrong, okay? We have several departments that have interim status. We have several directors that have voiced some opinions of, of action. Some of those actions that have taken place, I think, need to be corralled by their leader. And you do have some great assistants, an assistant and a deputy who are here today. That was in addition, well, one was. And, and I believe that you can make it happen with them and focus. And I just, I just think that personally, I would feel more comfortable with looking at this for a year, one year. So you're settled, but we have an opportunity to have an evaluation. I see there were some changes made in, in the contract. One, as far as an evaluation process, it's in there. And again, I know we've had that discussion that the attorney thought you didn't need one, and then you want, then we started to have them quarterly's. And I think you're right about that.
With all due respect, Mr. Chair, I believe the three-year contract is appropriate. On any given meeting, you have the ability to do a performance evaluation and say that I am no longer a good fit for this organization. This board asks that I make a long-term commitment. You know, back during the interview process, I agreed to that. I initially proposed a five-year contract. It came back three. I would like to see the three-year contract renewed. And with that, I'll just return to the board and ask, you know, for the other members' conversations or comments.
And if my, my memory serves me correctly, you almost had the five-year. There was a couple of individuals that wanted the five-year, and it just took one more squeak to get it out. So you were close. So I have to say that a five-year commitment is rather lengthy. And it didn't pass. But I think three years, in three years' time, even though the changes were intended to be positive for the community, and they are difficult, and sometimes it is, as we've discussed, change is not easy. I think in three years' time, we, or two and a half years' time, we could have seen far more robust change in a positive direction. Do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, I just want to add briefly. And I hate to go back to the Public Works Director, but the Administrator contacted me and said he was contacting Vero Beach Police Department and FDLE, which to me would seem to be, somebody said something about premature. The fact is that he brought that to my attention. That would raise the level of concern. And finally, Mr. Chair, I will say this. My message today to my fellow commissioners is simple. If you like the direction and the leadership that we have had in the last two and a half years, then it's up to you to continue with this relationship. It's that simple. We don't have to talk about projects. We don't have to talk about any of this stuff. The fact is how you and I perceive communication with the with the director, the executive director or the administrator, that could be subjective. Who knows? But the fact is, if the majority is comfortable with his leadership, that's the mission today.
Correct.
As for me, I'm not. But I'm only one of five. But keep in mind, the clarity and the effective communication that our leader presents to us is paramount in the success of this organization.
I just. John, one other thing I I showed you some vignettes of the building. Did you feel something then?
No, but I know I did. But I also know our employees felt very, you know, uneasy about you walking around the employee work areas, videoing their work.
I didn't. No, I didn't video. And you know what? Nobody knew that that was happening, but I appreciate that comment. There was nobody there. There was nobody there to have seen that. It's just it's a comment.
Well, everybody knows you do it. Everybody knows you do a seat check. They're always out in the field working.
That was yours.
Do you want to speak now? Do you want me to?
I'm in the building and I do walk about, okay? Thank you.
Okay, excellent. We all know, all five commissioners know why this contract was brought forward now. They might pretend not to know, but they know. And that is what has happened is that some of the commissioners have weaponized the media to harass and intimidate the county administrator, hoping that he would resign. Well, he hasn't. He's tougher than that, thank God. It's interesting to me because when the sheriff weaponized the media, some people sitting here are pretty uncomfortable with that, yet they feel free to use that same tactic. So very, very interesting. Meanwhile, I'd like to go through to shed a more positive light on some of this. I'm very proud of what what has been accomplished these last few years. And I'm going to take the time to go through it. And so everybody's taken time to nitpick. These are major accomplishments, all right? Some of them inaugural. The county didn't have this. It didn't exist, all right? Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Board Approved Inaugural Plan, Being Implemented Now, which is for the betterment of the entire county. Stormwater Management Plan, inaugural plan. We didn't have it. We needed it. Thanks to this man, we have it being implemented now. Indian River Lagoon Management Plan, Board Adopted, inaugural. We needed it. We didn't have it. We have it now, thanks to this man. Urban Service Area Boundary Study, Board Accepted, Hadn't Been Done in Decades. Decades had not been done. We needed it. We have it now, thanks to this man. Ear Report, Comprehensive Plan Amendments, Not Done Since 2008. I'll repeat that. Since 2008, we have it now, thanks to this man. And last but hardly least, and this is my personal favorite, because the Utilities Department was about to go bankrupt. We did the Utilities Rate Study and you might have it had not been done in decades. And the Utilities Department and we have a graph, there's a line chart. It was it's an enterprise fund. It's run like a business and it was about to go into financial distress. If it were a company, it would have been bankrupt because the rates over the last 20 years were increased by approximately 10% and over the 20 year period should have been increased by about 200%. And that's why in the community, if you're wondering why your bill went up twice within a 12 month period, that's why. But it needed to be done. It was going to be bankrupt. So, you know, we talk about what didn't happen. Well, what about what did happen? You know, well, maybe it would have been more exciting if it had gone bankrupt and then maybe the press would have had more to write about, you know? But he prevented it. It didn't happen. And again, thanks to this man. So nitpicking, please, let's not go there. And thanks to that, thanks to this man sitting here. And I'm happy to move it forward at any time.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion to renew the contract.
I'd be happy to second that. And the only thing I want to add to to the conversation is, you know, imagine what we could have been doing over the past two years without some of these distractions. I think our job as commissioners is to provide steady leadership for the people in this county. And that means making decisions based on facts and results, not rumor or innuendo. We hired our administrator to take on the hard work of changing the culture of this organization and making it more responsive, more service oriented and more accountable to our residents. Change of that kind is never instant and it's never easy, but it is progress and it deserves to be judged fairly. What does not serve our citizens is constant destabilization. Leaks and political games don't just hurt one person, they shake confidence in the entire organization and distract us from the real reason people elected us and what those issues are. I always will support accountability and transparency, but accountability means measured evaluation of performance, not campaigns designed to undermine. Our community expects stability, fairness and results. And that's the standard, I think, that we need to set and uphold. We have a lot of work that needs to be done and the constant distractions are making it very difficult and it's impacting our organization. I would hope that the my fellow commissioners would see that and we would start working together to move projects forward. Thank you.
Commissioners, can I just clarify? Is your motion and second to approve this proposed contract in front of you? Is that okay? Just want to clarify.
Mr. Chair, I just asked, what would his new anniversary date be?
The contract provides that it would be November 4th.
So it would shift from April 17th to November 4th?
But with with no progressive increase, the anniversary stays in there. The anniversary date of my employment would be the anniversary date. The contract date is the three year term. Again, there's just to clarify, there's no salary increase in this contract.
Thank you. This is a board decision and we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment?
Hello, County Commissioners. Michael Marsh, proud Indian River County resident. I wasn't going to speak because I didn't have much to say on this topic, but there was two interesting fun facts that was brought up, public records. Now, one thing was shared that a commissioner leaked something to the press. Believe that's what we heard, a text message. So that text message is subject to public record. I don't think we've heard yet during the conversation, is it important? I don't know. Which commissioner was it that went to the media? Through the chair, the chair said, that wasn't me. I didn't do it. I think Commissioner Adams or Commissioner Moss, it wasn't those two. So we look on this side. Who was it? County Administrator? Someone leaked it to the media. I think it goes to the point here about the distraction that we wouldn't be here if the media, and remember, Ray McNulty, good in some days, bad in other days, right? Depends on who's weaponizing, I guess. The second public record that I just listened to, and Commissioner Flesher, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't be making these public records. Me and you have a good relationship. I don't have the shirt yet. I don't know if Tony's going to give me a shirt. But the videoing, I think Commissioner Adams said, we all know you do that, taking videos of chairs. I don't know if you do that with your personal device, Mr. Chair.
No, I don't.
Whether it's.
I don't. I did not take the action in which was stated, okay?
So that was a lie?
I took pictures of empty chairs.
So those pictures would probably be subject to public record, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't be making them. I don't care what you have on your personal device. But we listened to that today and people who may not be fan favorites of the chair, elections are right around the corner. If those pictures were taken, picture or video, I think County Attorney Schuler can correct me if I'm wrong, that would be subject to a public record, would it not? That's all I have to say. I wouldn't be making them, Mr. Chair. We have a good relationship. The Green and Brown leaf, I'm on the green side, Mr. Chair. Have a great day.
But if you would like them, I would be happy to provide the photographs.
Walter McNulty, Indian River County resident, Vero Beach resident. I don't know where the rush is. There is a lot of stuff going on. You'll all be proud to know that in my many conversation with Doge and Blaze's office, you'll be visited early next year because you've brought up a lot of attention. You've definitely made a lot of news further up in the state. Commissioner Irman said about coaches and and us, the public. Well, I sit here as a public member. I know I've talked to over 200 residents just since the meetings I attended in October. You're not speaking for us. Somehow, some of you believe you're it. We're the smartest people in the room and we don't care what the people that voted for us say, but you're going to find out that's not the way it's going to work. Things are changing, okay? They're not distractions, they're problems. It's not a distraction, it's a problem. It's a problem when you have these things happening. And we're not talking about one a year, you know? Oh, it just goes away, gets swept. And let me clarify something, okay? My last name is McNulty. No way, shape or form, total different political stance as that gentleman, okay? I am a fiscal conservative, a constitutional conservative. When we vote for you, I don't care what your thought is when somebody else comes in here and you do a vote, you don't speak for yourself, you speak for me. If a majority of me says no, then you say no. If a majority of me say yes, then you say yes. Very disappointed that we're still talking about the sheriff's budget because you know what? I'm trying to get over that because if anybody looks since 2000, this board, I mean, this budget for the county has raised 52.3%, okay? Sheriff's budget, 56%. Little bit more, but look at the added responsibilities. But we're not going to rehash that because we'll let the court figure that out or whoever's going to make those decisions. It's almost an embarrassment what happens here because of the fact that so many of the board members are speaking on their own behalf. You're not listening to us. You're making your decisions based. There is absolutely congratulations. If you approve this, he knows he's going to have a good Christmas and everything. Whoa, welcome to the world of business, okay? Welcome to the world of employment. There is no guarantees and I know the at will thing, okay? I worked for a company where if I wasn't retired, if I hadn't retired six months ago, I wouldn't even be allowed to walk in here and speak my for myself without some type of, you know, it's like they say, freedom of speech? Absolutely, absolutely, you got freedom of speech. But there may be consequences for that speech. I have no consequences anymore. And I'm going to make it a point that because I have not been representative or not represented in what I believe, the people that I live next to, that go to my community meetings where we have our HOA, they've not been represented by many of you in here. And we're going to make it a point that it's not going to happen again. There is accountability, okay? And just like, I got to agree with Sheriff Lord, I mean, Commissioner Lord. You know, you can sit here and say, well, you know, and I had a conversation during COVID that I shouldn't have had, but I did it anyhow with one member up there where when the mask thing came out. So what did they say? They say, you know what? Well, the emergency manager is the one who made that decision. I didn't vote for that guy. I voted for you to make a decision based off of what I wanted, okay? So some of you can believe what you want. This county is still very conservative and it's going to stay that way. But there's no reason to rush a contract that's done in April. It's not up till April. My God, if so many employees out there could ever be told, you're guaranteed six months from now, you're still going to have your job. You know what? I worked for a very, very honorable gentleman for a long time and I was one of his top people. And I went to him during a double mortgage. You know what it's like to do a double mortgage back in 2008? Everything was looked because what happened? We had a crash. Everything went crazy, right? I went to him and said, hey, you know what? I'm in the middle of this double mortgage. I'm buying a house for my daughter that I have to sign for and I'm and I just want to make sure we're good. And he said, well, yeah, and if it's not good, then you'll leave just like anybody else. So at will is fine, but why rush into this, okay? Why? Why do it? Why jump forward so far ahead? There's absolutely no reason for it. As a citizen and a voter, and I know what I'm going to see today when I go back and I tell everybody about what happened here today, if it does get approved, what are you hiding? What does he have on you? What does it? I don't know what he's up to. All I know is every time I and not read the paper, every time I attend a meeting or I speak to other people that are privy to information, I have I know a lot of people. I just don't want to sit there. God bless you all for sitting there, okay? But you got to remember, you work for us. He works for us. We didn't hire him. You hired him. But he's got to be accountable. He's got to be accountable for what he does. And somehow, the board has lost that. They've some of the members of the board have lost it. You work for us, okay? You work for us. And there is no guarantees in life, okay? There's no guarantees. I worked many jobs where I thought I was doing a fantastic job. Never got fired from one, but got called in and said, you know what? You're messing up. You're making mistakes. And some of the things that we look at is when we to go back just on Sheriff for one moment, okay? Every time you approve another community, totally understand that the state's got your hands tied on some of that. That's another area that he's got to get out there and do. That's a bigger and you say, well, it's only another 800 hours. It's only another 125 hours. You've got two guys up there that wish. It takes a lot to patrol a community and to keep it right. I raised three sons, two daughters, and all of them are outside the area. But when they come back, I want them to still be able to see Vero Beach, okay? Now, one of them, she went to Canada because she's total opposite of me, but she's still my daughter regardless of how. She's lost her mind. But the other four, two of them want to come back so bad. But at the same time, they got families, they're in place and things. We got to make it so it's nice for everybody later on, okay? And I agree in the fact that maybe maybe Sheriff. Sheriff Flora shouldn't have sued the county. But maybe the county should have did what the public wanted. If you did a poll right now, you would find out that even today, I bet you it's in the area 65 to 70%, okay? Because just like you said, I'm at-will? Well, we all know one thing. What happens to the money the sheriff doesn't spend? Spend. Comes back, right? Automatically comes back. That's the law, correct? You don't use the money, it comes back. He's doing the same thing that he turned away. Well, you can always fire me, I'm at-will. Why? Why give it to you? Why give it to you? Your contract's up in April. January? Yeah, 90 days is plenty of time. You got through the holidays, congratulations. But it's, this keeps up. How can you do it? He's making a stain on every one of you. And that's, I'm just telling you by, I would never get involved in this except for, I'm, it's very important to make. I don't wanna come up here and public speak. But I tell you what, it's scary. It's scary what's happening here. It's crazy what's going on over here. And you guys hired him. And now you're gonna say, hey, I know you went this six months early and everything. But, you know, why not just be honest with the man? And say, you know what? No, we can't do that. Because you know what? Me, and I'm sure some other folks out here are saying, whoa, 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 whoa. Because in all honesty, if this happens, I gotta wonder what everybody's up to. What are you hiding? But we're gonna find out because you'll be glad to know my conversation yesterday with Blaze's office. 219 phone calls and emails from Indian River County since Thursday. All about this. You know what the CFO of the state of Florida makes? Do any of you know that? $195,000 with incentive bonuses. 100, it's public record. 195, he makes more than the CFO of the entire state of Florida, okay? I don't care if you pay him a quarter of a million dollars, $750,000 for the next three years, but let's see what happens in the next three months. We've had a real crappy four or five months, if you ask me. And things are looking bad on everybody up there, okay? And there's others that sit here and shake her mind, shake her head. The socialist trash collection? That's socialist, universal trash collection, okay? And you do it with waste management. Waste management. Number one shareholder, Dylan Lynn the Gates Foundation. Number two shareholder, BlackRock. 10 years. I got my tax bill the other day. I'm a veteran, partially disabled. What I get for a tax savings by being that, unless I get to 100%, was, totally went away. Had a commissioner three meetings ago, I guess, that said, hey, yo, the millage, all you running around millage. Oh, this is this, and we didn't raise it, we didn't raise it. But you raised taxes. Why am I paying three times more for my trash collection than what I was? Did everybody up here always? Do you all feel like you all gotta vote together as 100%? I think we're gonna see different today. But how did that come about? I know how it came about. Who came up with the idea of universal trash collection? Somebody made the first, somebody came up with that idea. Well, that's socialism, okay? You can't, you can. And the only reason I hear commissioners say it's not a tax. Oh, yes, it is. The Supreme Court said it was a tax because you just copied exactly what Obama did with universal healthcare, okay? I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy about it. And I have landscapers to do my yard. I don't have to worry about the waste. He takes care of that. Let him pay for that. I pay him to take care of that. He's not giving me a discount because of that. But on this particular subject, I don't wanna lose, lose this subject. This is not right, folks. We don't need to give somebody guaranteed employment six months ahead of time. Let's get closer to finishing his contract and then look at it. I'm not opposed to maybe having him stay, but let's see if we can get through three or four months without having all the stuff coming out about what's happening. And it's, it's just, I'm, I'm concerned. I'm very concerned because people that I thought were fiscal conservatives are not doing that. You're not doing that. Because if you were, some of these items would have never taken place. And we wouldn't be here today trying to extend somebody's job three years when they got six months left on a contract. There's no guarantees. So you're gonna vote the way you wanna vote. I'm just gonna tell you again, I respect each and every one of you. You can all have your own views, whether they're right, wrong, ridiculous, or whatever. You know, it's like when I ride past 60 and see the nonsense there. Why hasn't the county stepped in and said, no, no, no? You gotta give a permit before you even do this. Instead, you let them stand out there on the side of the road. Many people drive by hoping they step out in the road. But, you know, you're gonna do what you wanna do. But there are elections coming, as just gentlemen said. There are elections coming. And we will collectively, as a community, find fiscal conservatives. Because just like asking for a building, building moratorium, you've gotta get with the state somehow and fight it. And you gotta say, we gotta put a building, a moratorium on. We can't continue to do this. We want growth, but it's gotta be the right type of growth, okay? And all I can tell you is, I think some of you are gonna be quite shocked during the next elections. The only way you will keep your seat is if they're too far to the other side. They come up, but I don't think that'll happen. I think they're gonna find fiscal conservatives to come in here and say, because let me tell you what'd be unique, and let me tell you Blaze's thought on this millage. As we've grown tremendously, have we not? Millage should go down, not up. Check him. Call his office, ask him. And they'll tell you. Our millage rate should be going down. You don't get to brag that, oh, we kept the millage rate the same. But we just charged you $600, or I think mine's $398 or something for what you were paying $130 for. You don't get to do that and then say, oh, it's not a tax. Supreme Court says, yes, it's a tax. You're just calling it a fee, okay? It's still a tax. I gotta pay it, okay? So this is wrong, though. This is totally wrong, no offense to John at all, and, you know, I hope things turn around for him somehow. But this is wrong. This soon to sign another three-year contract, it don't matter if he's at-will. Because you're always gonna have a couple of you there that are gonna cheerlead and say, well, and so he might end up spending it even if he makes big mistakes. So that's all I have to say. And I would hope that we vote to at least put it off. And let's do an evening meeting with it. And I'll make sure, and I promise you, if you give me two weeks before this decision is made in the evening meeting, I'll make sure this room is filled with plenty of people that can talk. Okay? Because you gotta start listening to your voters. You gotta start listening to the people that put you in office. Other than that, thank you, and, you know, best of luck.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else? We have a...
Good morning, everybody. Tom Sullivan, 4187 West 16th Square. I was on my bike, giving you a break here, watching this. You got me jumping the shower and come. I would just like to speak, as I always do, in support of John. In terms of the contract, you know, I, I think he's done an excellent job. In, in terms of, I don't, I really don't wanna comment on what other people say, but, you know, people use this socialism term a lot. And I know, once a month, everybody's very thankful for President Roosevelt. And I think I can leave it at that. But I think sometimes we forget about the greater good. And sometimes things have to be done for the greater good. And as you grow, you grow more collectively, and things are done for the greater good. In terms, and, and that's my statement, as reflects that part, we are becoming a much larger community. We need more sophisticated levers of government. I remember when I first came here, and I, this was a funny story. When I first came, I don't know if I mentioned this to Daryl or to, I'm sorry, to Commissioner Laura or Commissioner Fleischer. Now, as a basketball coach, I'd be all over the country. I used to chase down cops. You pull into Monoma, Iowa, I need a place to eat. Nobody knows a better local place to eat than those two guys. I remember chasing a guy and he was running away from me. You know, and, and I pulled, so as soon as I come down to Vero, I see a cop sitting on the side. I pull up, you know, so I can talk to him. We're facing opposite ways. Kind of a little, you know, shocking if a guy doesn't know you. I made sure. But in those days, it wasn't as scary. It was like 11 years ago. I said, hey, chief, what's up? How you doing? How's everything going? Where can I get a good coffee, good breakfast? You know, and the guy tells me, I said, hey, my best friend happened to be a cop in New York. I'm very friendly with my family way back when we had cops as uncles. And so I say, hey, how's it going? You enjoying it? And the first thing he says to me is, eh, man, they don't pay us. This is 11 years ago, you know? And I remember 11, I remember probably very shortly after that, I was at my first meeting, and there were a couple of guys in the back in administration. Nobody up here, but people that were in administration. And I went up to them and I said, hey, the cops are pissed. I said, you know, I come from, I, I lived in Boston, I lived in New York, I lived in Newark, New Jersey. I said, usually those guys are paid very well. They're taken care of with pensions, they're taken care of when they retire with their retirement benefits. And I said, it's the first time I've ever gone up to the cop where he says, this is like this. And I said, wow. So here we go, 10 years later, we have a festering situation. Now, and I do understand what happened there with the COVID thing, you know, that, and, and how you managed not to lay everybody off, which was a wonderful thing, and, you know? And now the time has come that we have, you know, we have to equalize the pay for the area, which is wonderful. Actually, I have to say this, Mr. Irman. The guys that I met on EMT, they always spoke like, hey, I, I say, hey, how's it going? And they would say, yeah, we, we get paid, you know, they were happy, you know? And, and I said, that's great. So, so now we arrive at this state, and I'm saying, things are going well. I was curious. I started hearing the building, and then I started talking to Sean. And we started talking about sewage. And we started talking about how maybe we should develop. What do I know? I just built buildings when I was an athletic director. I had a look with massive campus future projects. Here, I said, how are you gonna build out? Well, you wait till Pulte comes in. You wait until GHO decides to find some infill lots. We wait for Devosta. And then they deal with our, and I mean this with no disrespect, they deal with our functionaries. Those are the people who interact that John controls. And they get, you know, you, you go and you meet with these people, and I met a lot of them. You know, the, the young guys in the office here. And as Joe, as Commissioner Irman always says, they're hardworking, good, it's our staff. And they are. But the level of sophistication that the developers were hiring would far exceeded their ability to deal with it. And pretty soon, they didn't even realize they were being co-opted, in my mind. And, and I think this is something that we have to look at. And, and I enjoyed that John, when he came here, brought in new structures to monitor that. You know, and, and I think he's done a, a good job of that. And, and the other thing I'd like to say is that I'm, I'm still concerned about that, and we're at a, a sort of a pivotal point here. At one of the former meetings, the guy got up and he said, maybe we don't do this the right way. Maybe these grander plans should be brought to you first. Because I picture, let me just backtrack a little here. In the last meeting, someone threw back, maybe even the whole commission, threw back to a person who was a functionary, good one, that you develop what the greater good is. Give us, give us the definition of the greater good for, for the community. In other words, how do we determine benefit when a contractor wants to build something? Do we, am I being too vague? Or does anyone remember that, okay? And, and I was saying, I picture you guys, and maybe, maybe I have an illusion, I don't, I picture you guys as the visionaries. I picture you guys as where we wanna go, where we wanna be. And, and, and not to point anyone out, you all do it, but I can point to Commissioner Irman, you know, with the ELAP. I can point to him when he first came here and he had an idea of turning a pond into a recreation area, and unfortunately, abutted, some water district. But those are the types of things that I thought the commission would do. I think, and I understand how we get involved in this nitty-gritty, you know, but I, I expected you guys to be the visionaries. Where do we want to be? And, and we won't even be here. I, I for sure, you know, at 75 years old, you know, give me another, give me, I don't even wanna mention a number. Okay? But I think that that's where we want the community to go. And I have to say, I understand the greater good concept. And sometimes that requires some people to pay. Actually, I'm looking forward to having a discussion with Commissioner Irman, similar to what we do with the ELAP program. Maybe we can do something for people that we need in the community. Firemen, policemen, teachers, and give them grants as down payments. The, you know, us buy land, you know, and not get into the real estate business or anything like that, but make it more affordable. But these are visionary ideas that I'm hoping you all can come up with. I think John has organized the department here very well. And having had five jobs, you know, in basketball, knowing how hard it is to go and turn a culture around, you know, it, it's tough. And, and not everybody's gonna like styles. Some people didn't like mine, some, but as long as we're, you feel we're headed in the right direction, you know, I, I support them. And I have to get back to my workout later. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to two with Vice Chairman Laura and myself. And it's been requested for a quick break, and we'll honor that. We're taking a brief recess. We're taking a brief recess. We will now be called back to order, and we're on to Parks and Recreation and Conservation, item 13H1, which is consideration for the sale agreement for the purchase of 19.6 acres of Jungle Trail Island Club Manor, which the site through the Environmental Lands Acquisition Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Zito.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You're there.
Michael Zito, Deputy County Administrator, and with me is Wendy Swindell, Parks, Recreation and Conservation Assistant Director. And I see Chris Hicks is also with us today. He was part of our team. And of course, Commissioner Irman being the chair liaison to the Environmental Lands Acquisition Panel today. Before you, we have the second iteration of the Jungle Trail Island Club Manor acquisition. This acquisition was presented to you in great detail at our last meeting, and as we've developed a consistent pattern, we bring it back to you after the public has had a chance to absorb the presentation, review the appraisals, give staff some feedback. And we, it's before you today for the vote to approve the contract. But with that, I would ask for you to entertain any input from the public, or if you have any questions of Ms. Swindell, she has the original presentation ready to access if you need information from it. Otherwise, I would ask you for the staff recommendation.
Are you going to show it?
Well, we're not intending to do the, we have the presentation available. Perhaps maybe just show the aerial of the property for everyone's recollection. But this was all presented in detail on the 24th of October. There it is. 19.6 acres, tier one property for the Environmental Lands Acquisition Panel. And the appraisal support the purchase price. And we're, can take any input or questions from the public or the commission.
Wendy, what's your idea on this being a butts Captain Forrester, obviously Jungle Trail, which is all plus? But what's your vision for that? Make it part of Captain Forrester kind of thing?
I think yes, as we talked about in the last meeting. I think the juxtaposition adjacent to Captain Forrester is really important. We would like to resolve some of the issues that we have at Captain Forrester relative to it getting inundated on the south side, and this gives the opportunity to consider that. And as I mentioned, the site is pretty much a blank slate. It's been cleared. So we have the opportunity to bring back to you a conceptual plan with, and perhaps maybe several iterations of a conceptual plan as to what's possible.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve. I think that's already been done. But you made a motion to approve.
Oh, I was just a second. I thought he had already made a motion.
He did.
Well, I did, but I would say it again, you know?
It bears repetition. Good job to all.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Two microphones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, Utility Services, item 13L1, which is the review of the Americas Water Infrastructure Act, Risk and Resiliency, or resilience, assessment updates in any River County. Still say good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Howard Richards, Manager of Capital Projects, Department of Utilities. We're here today to present an update on the Americas Water Infrastructure Act. We're having some technical difficulty there getting access to the file. But by, for introduction, AWA, Americas Water Infrastructure Act, was passed in 2018. It requires community water systems serving populations greater than 3,300 to do a risk and resilience assessment and develop or update its emergency response plan. And there are very specific requirements under AWA for that. IRC developed its risk and resilience and emergency response plan and certified with the US EPA in 2020. The EPA also requires an update and recertification every five years. So over the last five years, there has been changes to the law, added more stringent requirements. And so this time around, we engage Arcadis to support us with the update of the risk and resilience and emergency response plans. Both documents have been completed, and we certified the risk and resilience assessment in March of this year and the emergency response plan in September. We presented to you in April of this year on the risk and resilience assessment, and today, Arcadis will be presenting on the emergency response plan. So we have the Arcadis consultants here with us today. I'll have Corey Sapp, who is the lead consultant, and also Zahira, who is a project manager. But Corey is going to be presenting today as well. Corey, we do have challenge with access to the file.
Okay.
So maybe you can, you know, kind of wing it somehow?
Yes. It's not, it's not allowing me. Well, we had some great graphics, but basically this emergency response plan.
Kim, is it the one that's attached to the agenda item? Is it the presentation that's attached?
Yes.
You can pull it up online.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. Uh huh.
Sorry, just trying to get you guys a workaround.
Oh, that's fine.
It does have nice graphics.
Thank you. Right, I'll go ahead and start by telling you what we did as far as we updated and expanded the emergency response plan itself. It's a very large document. We also updated the rapid response guide, and that is a smaller document that pulls out the critical information that staff need right away. And we're addressing the all hazards that sort of floated to the top in that risk and resilience assessment, so that the utility services will be prepared, able to respond, know what resources, roles and responsibilities, recovery, and working with emergency services. So that's sort of the basic reason why you do these plans, and having that smaller plan, you don't have to flip around, and staff had a lot of input, what would help them, what they wanted to see in response, you know, contact lists, maps, the things that they really don't want to be fumbling trying to find. So there are two documents. Also part of this task, when we were at like a draft final phase of both the ERP and the rapid response guidance, we did a tabletop exercise to exercise it. All right. Okay, so here we have a picture of the emergency response plan, and next to it, the rapid response guide. And Howard covered the requirements and certification to EPA. So still going through that last part, I was talking about the exercise we did with staff, with emergency services, you know, with stakeholders to test the plan and make sure the basic contents, information, direction were clear, concise, able to be followed, and people, you were able to follow along in a scenario and, you know, work through that scenario with the information at hand. Subsequently, we looked at all the things that really went well and enhanced on those, and then any challenges, we, you know, adjusted the ERP and the guide to make sure that it fit what staff can follow and what they do. So that's sort of the whole part of that task. So just stepping back a bit, the reason we do these plans, it's not only because they're required, but we have a preparedness cycle for emergencies that is, you know, industry standards, femographic, it's universal. And the first one is the one we are talking about today. You write the plan, and then the other elements are part of that cycle. And you organize, make sure you have what you need to implement the plan, you train, you exercise, and you evaluate, and then you start again. And that's why there's the five-year update requirement, or sooner, should something major change as far as the system or the things that we're dealing with. Just to note, it does align with local, state, and federal standards. It also incorporates other response plans and procedures from the utility services as well as emergency services. And it follows the guidance provided by EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, and other entities that build the systems that we all coordinate and respond under. So what's in an ERP? It's basically used a way as to enable activation, so if there's a major emergency, when to activate it, what operations, you know, of the water system need to happen during those times. So there's roles and responsibilities, not only of the utility, but also stakeholders. It talks about monitoring, what you need to know about monitoring, you know, whether it's your water quality or the status of the situation, everything that needs to be happening, activation, implementation, and administrative portions of a disaster. As said, the operations, response and recovery, and support and coordination of resources. And that's really where you work with emergency services to get into that EOC, make sure that the requests are going up and down the chain, and information is being exchanged in this, under the same system. So the bottom part is just the actual statements in the law that it must cover, and we do do that. We coordinate with local emergency planning committees. We document all of those things, document everything to make sure that we've covered all of these aspects, and EPA is able to find them if they come and take a look. So I won't read all of these boxes, but these are basically the major elements that we approach an ERP and make sure that we cover. We want context, that's very important, using titles, you know, who do we need to call, when, for what, who, how? And then also a good description of the system and the assets, because not everyone is going to know that, and this ERP also sits in emergency services. So it really helps everybody answer quickly. So it really helps everybody answer quickly, you know, and know what we're talking about. It incorporates the findings of the risk and resilience assessment. That's sort of your, where do you know what hazards to address? Has maps, incident-specific response procedures for some of the incidents that came out of that risk and resilience assessment to really focus in on those. Again, we had staff input, list all the resources, in-house, you know, availability for sharing and who, where, when, how to ask for these things, and incorporated the lessons learned. So the guidance we use, it follows EPA, FEMA, industry best practices, or American Waterworks Association. They have manuals and standards that we make sure for water, specific for water utilities, that we get in there. And it also, like the RA, addresses natural and man-made events, whether it's malevolent or technological and that kind of thing. I'm not going to read you the contents, but just kind of go over how it's organized. The first two boxes, we call the base plan. And that's a really long nine-section, it's got introductory upfront, then nine sections following it, that is a great preparedness and training tool. It tells you everything about everything. And then it has appendices that have really specific information, you know, equipment list, generators, you know, where they're at, what's their capacity, what to do in the event of this, that, and the other, training and exercise goals, recovery phase information and plans. Gets really into the details of how to remove debris, how to, who to call, and how to coordinate different things. And then the rapid response guide itself, which has that key list of information. This is the tabletop exercise that we did. And I, throughout the whole thing, I really would, great kudos to Howard and Sean and their team. They just knocked it out of the ballpark. We've had workshops and everybody's very engaged and participated, and we've got a lot of great feedback. So this is really designed and tailored with them. And without that help, we have a hard time putting these together for utilities. But we had fun exercise. There was a hurricane with a hazmat release as well. And, you know, we had emergency services involved. We followed the standard homeland security exercise and evaluation program. And that's really good. It's a structured way that all exercises are executed when you follow these processes. And includes an after-action report and a review meeting that we went over, well, how can we tweak it, what really worked, and how can we even improve on that? And what things maybe do we want to move to the rapid guide or what did we really need, that type of thing? Tweaked everything and had the final issued. So I know that's kind of went through that kind of fast. But are there any questions on why we did this, how we did this? All the people we tested?
Had to be done.
It's, yeah, it's, we're very proud of this. It's, it's very useful and efficient and effective. It's. Okay. Thank you.
No questions? Do you have any motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Adams? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you once again. Next item, county attorneys matters. And that's the culverted road cross maintenance agreement with Bureau Beach, Bureau West Business Park.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Susan Prado, Deputy County Attorney, on behalf of Indian River County Attorney's Office. I bring to you a proposed, a proposed culverted road crossing maintenance agreement. There is a proposed development that is going around and has a plat that is awaiting this particular item. The plat is for a business park west, in the west side of the county. This business park, there are two separate pieces of property that are under the same ownership that happened to be divided by a canal, if you will, that is owned by the county. It was dedicated to the county in the Kilmorether State's plat long ago. We do maintain that canal and we are responsible for maintaining that canal. However, there, in this proposed develop, in this proposed development, you would see in the attachments that there is an aerial there that I had put red on, which demonstrates the particular process of property. The blue line that goes in between represents the canal. And there's a little black square just on, over the little blue line that connects both red parcels. That is the culverted crossing that is being contemplated here. It's actually already in existence and has been for a long time. However, the maintenance has not been clear. So I want to make sure that we clarify that at this time before we agree and move forward with the finalization of this plat to make sure that we can avoid any future confusion as to whose responsibility it is to pay for said culvert and maintenance. With that, I was negotiating with their attorney, and we have come up with this culverted road crossing and maintenance agreement in which the HOA does in effect agree and take full financial responsibility and maintenance responsibility for this culvert and the road crossing. In this agreement, it also states that, you know, we have the ability to reasonably act should they fail to do so. But only if they were to fail to do so, it would impede us from doing our job and make sure and maintaining the canal. So that's what this access agreement is about. So it's more of a preventative measure, if you will. It will be recorded in the public record. So that way that if any time in the future, someone has a question as to whose duty or whose obligation it is, it will be well noted that it is the obligation of the HOA of the business park. Do I, do any of you, so my recommendation for today would be to go ahead and approve the proposed culverted maintenance and road agreement, allow the chairman to execute so that I can move forward and have this item recorded. Do any of you have any questions for me?
One question, Mr. Chair. Were the surrounding property owners act briefed?
The surrounding property owner is the applicant. So it is essentially, it's north and south, and it's only right here. And it's literally the applicant as both on the upper and the southern side. So there's no one else around there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is, so are they going to build a road? Is something paved now? What is the current status?
It's funny that, you should ask that, Commissioner. It's actually already paved and there already is a culvert there. When this plat first came up and was presented to our office, that was one of the first questions I had was, that's fantastic, but where did this come from? How did it get here and who's maintaining it? And so this agreement in essence is to make sure that in future, because it only gives a private benefit to this private business park, that they should be the ones to take on that maintenance obligation should this culvert or this little roadway fail.
So there already is traffic. We're not, we're not adding traffic.
No, ma'am. No, it's, it's an internal, it's odd because it's essentially, it's internal. It just connects the two, I'm sorry, the two private parcels that are there that are owned by the applicant. It doesn't connect any external traffic, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other question? Any member of the public wishes to comment on this action?
Do you have any motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by myself? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We'll move on to Solid Waste Disposal District, item fifteen B one, which is residential paper shredding event in November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
No, both of us. Good morning, Commissioners of Monstremetha, Solid Waste Disposal District. We're just happy to bring you, you know, the paper shredding event. It's coming up and Jill's here to give you some details.
Hi, Jill Brown. Good afternoon. Recycling specialist. We are once again having our fall paper shredding event. We have it twice a year at Southeast Secure Shredding, thirty-nine-ten U.S. One, from seven AM to eleven AM on November fifteenth. It's a Saturday. All residents are welcome to come, bring three boxes to have them securely shredded right on the property. We usually get five or six hundred cars. And last April, we got five hundred and fifty-five cars, and that diverted seven point five tons of paper from going to the landfill. So it's always a good thing. And there's no cost except advertising, which is already budgeted. Waste management handles the, paying for the car is seven dollars a car. We're just great, happy to do it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you once again. We're always looking forward to the event, and I know many people do.
Yes, it's a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bags of shredding material. Thank you. At this point, is there any member of the public which to speak about anything that was not on the agenda that they would have had, take the opportunity to be able to speak? This is your opportunity. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Lisa Sinersky, Indian River County resident. I do love to mention I'm a fifth-generation native. And I am here to discuss a few topics that have to do with land use, a few things that were mentioned, I believe, earlier in the meeting, not necessarily on the agenda, of course, but I want to bring them up for anybody that gets to maybe re-watch this later. I'm really trying to learn a little bit about a lot, different subjects. And the couple of things that I just wanted to reach, touch on were SB one eighty was mentioned earlier. I really want the, the public to try to wrap their heads around it. Just, like I said, I'm trying to kind of understand a lot. I, I'm aware that there's a lawsuit regarding SB one eighty. There's different cities, counties, other municipalities that are involved in a lawsuit. I want to know, I guess, what Indian River County's stand is on this. And just for the general public, again, to understand that this violates our state's home rule. It takes away from the things that are important to me and to many people regarding land use. And so I, if that's my understanding, that other cities and counties are standing up and saying, no, we don't want this to, to take over what we get to say that happens in our county, and they're taking a stand and actually coming together to fight this, I wish that we could be involved in that. And just to make it clear, some of the participants in this lawsuit are Orange County, Manatee County, some of the municipalities, Destin, Delray Beach, Deltona, Pompano Beach, so places that we're all well familiar of. But they're involved in a lawsuit to fight this. And again, I'm very, I care deeply about what happens to the land in Indian River County. So I just want to, again, bring that awareness to people that we as a county and our leaders have the ability to stand up, not just say that we don't like it or that we agree that it maybe is a problem or a concern, but we have the ability to get involved in a, in a deeper level. And that's just something, again, I just want to bring up to the public to learn a little bit about. It's not only in our county, but it's statewide, and we have to be aware of things like this. Another subject, you mentioned, I believe, House Bill one oh five. I wasn't here when Representative Brackett was here. I believe he proposed, that's the word, that bill maybe the next day of being here in Indian River County. Again, that jeopardizes what we get to do in our county with the land use. It's detrimental to what would happen to our small town, if you will, character that we're trying to hold on to. Again, the development happening, we're talking about infrastructure and not being able to keep up with what's already currently being developed. That affects us here, and we all really need to be, I want to say, taking more of a stand against things like this at a county level. Because, again, many other places are trying to challenge that, and I want to be more involved in that. One other subject, when it comes to land use, something that I really, I think my question today will be, how can something be, be put into place or what do I need to do as a resident here to oppose large data centers? It's something I want to learn more about. I try to look at the land for sale. I have dreams and hopes that I get to own a large, not even own, but protect a large amount of, of property someday. And I'm grateful for the ELAP program. I'm trying to get more involved in that. I'm thankful for the property that was just saved and protected for conservation. That's a beautiful program. Anyhow, I just want to bring it to, again, the public's attention, that large data centers, they're looking for places to go. And by a quick Google search, you will see that we have five hundred, a thousand-plus acres for sale in Indian River County. I know, for one, that I don't want to see a large data center here. And I think the public needs to just be aware of what the data centers are. It's for ChatGPT, for AI, for all of this new technology that's, you know, there's some benefits to it. But the city of Stewart just turned down a thirteen-point-two billion-dollar deal to deny a data center in their area. I don't know if they're looking to come here, but I, I would like to know how I can move forward with putting something into place to say that Indian River County does not want a large data center here. It increases our electric bills. It takes away water. It literally can deplete an area's water source for, for people living close to that data center. The noise, not to, not to mention the land use. They're bad news. And again, Stewart, it's just, you know, not too far away from us. If they said no, I'm sure somebody's looking to put that data center somewhere else. And so that's my question today is how can we move forward? How can I move forward to getting something in place that says we won't allow something large and, and destructive like that to be here? So that's my question, I guess. Comment, yes, but, but a question. What do I need to do to move forward? I guess would be a policy? I'm not sure, but to say that we, we wouldn't go forward with something like that. How do I bring that to another step, I guess?
Chair, do you want me to?
Yeah.
You mentioned a couple of things. I know Senate Bill one eighty is one of the items that we are keenly aware and watching and seeing how it may affect us. We obviously have comprehensive plan amendments that are up in the state right now being reviewed, and we understand elsewhere that they're being wholesale rejected. And some instances without a basis, just saying, well, it may potentially harm. So we're going to be very curious when we get our comprehensive plan or what we call it, where objection, recommendation, comment, report back. House Bill one oh five is not really about land use. It's about, and I'll be honest with you, I told Representative Brackett I supported it, and I would come up, notwithstanding my, probably my colleagues' chagrin, but it's, when, when staff impose a local policy that's not adopted by this board, and I'll use driveways as an example. We have this, we had a former Public Works Director had his own idea of what a driveway should be, where it should be located, how, how wide it should be, and we've been enforcing that. Problem is, it's not adopted by this board, so therefore that shouldn't be the case. You know, we thought we put that to bed, and it just came, came back not too long ago. I think we have put it to bed now, but still, there may be other issues where, at the end of the day, this is the policymaking group. If staff or, or a resident feels a policy should come forward, they bring it forward, and this board deliberates, debates it, and then makes a decision one way or the other. And whatever decision they make, if they adopt it, then we enforce it. So that bill is probably, in my personal opinion, you know, professional opinion is not a bad bill. not a bad bill. In terms of opposing large data center, it really goes back to where they propose to locate, and what zoning district it would be in. We generally try to, when you look at zoning districts, to make sure they're compatible with the surrounding areas, they're not going to like, so I mean, it just, it, it depends on where they're located, I don't know what the, the exact zoning district, it's probably going to be commercial industrial or something like that, or light industrial, medium commercial, they're typically, you know, outside of parking, having worked with some before, I don't know how much of, the demands are on the system, on the media traffic coming to and go, but they're very, but, but we would certainly look at that, and, but it'd be, would be in the zoning districts, I can follow up with you, to tell you where those zoning districts may be, I'll get with you after to get your information.
Well, I would say that zoning, in my mind, I mean, I understand the, the policies and such on where things are maybe allowed to be built, I'd say nowhere. I, I don't need to know where the zoning would be acceptable, to me, it's opposing completely. There is no space here in Indian River County for a large data center, that would be detrimental to our electric bills for water usage, they don't create jobs for people, so we can talk about that, if people are concerned about money and jobs. I am concerned about land and wildlife, water, our future. And I know, I'm, again, I'm bringing up a subject that, again, isn't on the agenda, but that's my time, I'm here to say things that are concerning to me, this just happened in Stewart, this isn't like, something, you know, that's just random, it has happened very recently, and I know that these centers are looking for places to come, and so, you know, I'm proud of the city of Stewart for denying something like that, it was a big, big dollar item, but again, I'm just bringing things up to the public's attention, because I, for one, just drive around and I see things, I'm like, oh, when did that come? Oh, how did, how is that allowed to be here? I don't want to just drive out 95 one day and see some data center that I had the ability to come up and just at least say my thoughts and concerns on it. So, again, I, I, I would like to know a little bit more on maybe another step I can take to bring this up to some kind of agenda item, I guess, to, to, I don't know, have a vote on it. I know that these things take time, and there's, there are procedures, but again, that needs to be something, in my opinion, that, that would be voted on. I, I'm not asking everybody's opinion right this second, but to be voted on, to say, it's not a zoning and, and developing issue, it's a, it's a matter of, no, we don't have, we're not, we don't have space for that, we, we would oppose it completely. I don't know if that's even allowed, in the sense of zoning and developing, I mean, somebody comes here and they say, I want to build, and we just say, let's find a spot for it, we don't say no, that's what it sounds like, but I would hope that as a community, we can say yea or nay to, to what's being, what's being brought up to be built here, not just, we allow building of any kind, we, we get to say yes or no, and then find that space for such building or development, not, we just let anything and everything come here to be built. I mean, right, that's, that's, in my mind, that's what I'm hearing, but it doesn't make sense. So, again, is there something I can do next? I like your, your, I appreciate your suggestion or offer, but, again, I'm looking for more, how can I get this on something that comes up to a vote, to say that we would yes or no approve a data center if somebody brought that to our planning and zoning department?
Based on the size you say, last thing is, I'll give you my card. Last thing I would say is, based on the size you're talking about, it would be required to go through a public review process, it would not be administrative process.
So if some, like, if somebody came here saying, with that, with that potential, it would come up to the public's attention, and, okay?
Well, certainly. Yes.
I mean, I would assume that, but I'm, I guess what I'm looking at is like, a step ahead of that, like, we don't even need to bring it up to the public, because it's not appropriate here. So I guess that's not really the process, but that's okay.
Well, I, I, I think what you're looking at is, is to build the wall. I, I get it. And, again, we are here to protect and do positive work for the citizens. But as we talked earlier, and you, you also cited to it, with the Senate bill and the direction now, and in hearing from the Catty Administrator, that much of the work that we did is in jeopardy, in compromise.
Yeah.
And, and again, you have state prohibitions that have eliminated that. I coined it earlier when we talked about having the, the joint meeting that we had with P and Z. Again, that was, at best, and I said it last night at another meeting, it was informational purposes.
Yes.
Again, to know the wants, the needs, the commitment, the interest of the boards, the public, and what the future is for the county. However, with what's in Tallahassee, what has been decided by many in a broad-scale area, and, again, these are representatives from the entire state, we have been hit with some serious grave concerns of our ability to continue with our home rule, home rule philosophy in, in preserving this county.
Yes, I understand, I think that's where my mind is going with the different things I mentioned, that if we don't say something now, and, and get that in place, is, are these bills going to take over that decision? And next thing you know, we just got data centers left and right because we didn't say anything in advance? I don't know if that even works, but...
It appears, I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, I don't know if it, it would work that way, but that's, I guess, what I, my, my request or my ask, is, is there anything I can do to bring this up? Is that even a possibility for a vote to take place?
We, we can meet.
Yes, because of, because of that.
We will talk further, but there's, at, at this juncture, for what has happened in the northern part of the state, and, again, with the actions that have taken place, our home rule versatility has been somewhat hampered.
So...
And so there's nothing that the board can do to change that. Again, we can't provide for more restrictive covenants on what we would allow and not allow, and it's not concern about threat of lawsuit, it's concern about approvability. We, we could not go in that direction, at this point.
Okay. I think, I think I understand.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anyone else? At this juncture? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.